We staff, which I know can be timely to set aside the time for us to have the conversation to better, you know, to be better informed of both sides. I really appreciate you taking the time to join us this evening.
So while Jason is popping up front, I want to illuminate some of the attachments that you have that are printed off for you. One, of course, is a copy of the slide deck that Jason will be working off of this evening. And at a glance for our pre-K programs, just some information now, the different pre-K programs that we offer throughout the county. And last, but certainly not least, is our annual enrollment accommodation plan. This is something that both boards receive from our planning department every year. We made one slight enhancement where we've added cover sheets for each magisterial district so that you can see how the impact of enrollment is in your magisterial district specifically, and copies of each magisterial district are attached as cover sheets to that document. All right.
Okay, well, good evening, Madam Chairs and members of the boards. Jason Cowery, Executive Director for Facilities and Maintenance for Schools. I appreciate everybody's time here tonight. I feel like I've got all this space and everybody's coming back inside here, but I may wander around a little bit. Anyhow, I would just ask just a couple of quick things. I know Mr. Sante is here from the county and we're going to want to get to him real early in the discussion. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through the presentation. We'll ask everybody just a whole questions, and then we'll get to the discussion on permits first, and then we can come back and discuss everything. So without further ado, this is the wrong presentation.
Why don't you go to the next page? That same presentation?
That's the wrong one. Are we on line already? Okay, all right. Apologies for that. All right. So the agenda here tonight, again, these are the topics that the board has asked that we discussed. So we'll get right into it here. The first thing, talk about the elementary school nineteen site selection process. There were a lot of questions around how did the school board end up arriving at Brookpoint High School site. So I think everybody here knows, or if you don't, we have a joint land acquisition committee. This is a committee that's comprised of staff members from both the school board's team and the board supervisors team. That team worked from October of last year through the early part of 2023, evaluated actually more than 20 sites, but ultimately graded out 20 different sites for the elementary school nineteen site selection process. In January of last year, Dr. Taylor and Mr. Palmer went over and actually presented some of those to the board supervisors as well. And then we had meetings with the school board beginning in February, March, April, and ultimately culminated in May. Now, at that point, the Emory Mill site and the Germana sites were both believed to be reasonably available for 2026 openings. That was in May of last year. However, over the summer of last year into the fall, it became apparent that both sites were in some dispute of some nature, either with the property owners there, Germana or Emory Mill, the developer. So both of those were considered ultimately not to be available for 2026 opening. And so we worked with the school board to come back and take one last shot at trying to identify a site east of 95, which was the school board's direction. And Brookpoint High School was identified as being a site that could accommodate the elementary school and still deliver in 2026. As you know, Brookpoint was not a part of that original list of 20 that were considered. Again, that was something that came up after, after the original site selection process. Okay. This will be interesting. Always keep you on your toes. All right. So this is the site ranking criteria that the joint land acquisition committee looked at. The developable area, obviously, what, you know, is a good site? Can we make it work? And that's also bolstered by infrastructure, land use, site access. Timing, as I discussed, was a really critical component because the ability to get both elementary schools designed and constructed and delivered an opening, open in that time was very tight, right? So for us to start essentially in May of 2023 and deliver a school in three years was the goal. That is, that was the minimum timeline we had to work with and was very tight. So that ended up being a pretty critical piece of the puzzle for us if we walked through that. I do want to note that the land acquisition committee did not look at boundary scenarios for the sites, right? So that would ultimately be something that the school board would have to work through independent of this, of the school boundary zones. But these were the criteria that the joint committee worked through. So this is a redacted version of the final site scoring matrix that was presented back in May of this year. The actual properties themselves removed for purposes of the school board's negotiating capabilities. But you can see here that we have a list, one through 20. They were graded out over there on the right, A through F, where they ultimately fell on the scale, and then we ranked them. Largely, one of the things that was driving this, again, was timeline, right? So the ability to open in 2026 was a huge factor in the discussions and the decisions on when and what sites wouldn't work for elementary school nineteen. There we go. All right. All right. So this is a slide that should be familiar to both boards. We talked about this two weeks ago. The big update here was that from September to December, we were able to adjust the cost estimates down a little bit, which obviously was a good thing. But I do want to just stop here for one second. I'm going to touch on this more in just a minute as I get into the actual process of how we developed the prototype. But the timeline that, again, we were on for elementary schools eighteen and nineteen was very tight. So the costs that you're really seeing here in the FY, the costs that were approved, I should say, FY24 CIP, as both the boards looked at last year at this time and approved and said, we like it, this is good. Those were developed in 2022, right? So those costs at this point in time were about two years old where we stand today. The costs, as we looked at them last year coming into May of last year, were based on those older estimates, right, as well as the original prototype design, which at the time was thought to be 107,000 square feet. We'll talk about that in a minute, how that changed. And you'll understand, I think, a little bit better how some of the costs shifted and how it felt quick. But in reality, it was just the timeline that we were on to deliver the school in, by 2026. Okay, all right. Costs to construction comparisons. These are the three sites that seem to be of most interest. Obviously, Brookpoint, which is currently the site selected by the school board for elementary nineteen, we have that. Right now, we're looking at $73 million total all in to deliver Brookpoint in 2026. You can see if we adjust those to 27, 28, how the costs, of course, go up. The big takeaway here, I think, is that at this point, if there were a change in direction from the boards to shift to a different school site, we would have to go to a 2027 opening. So we would delay the opening of the school one year. That ultimately factors in about $3.7 million in additional inflation costs, so something for the boards to consider as they talk through this. We also have about $1 million in sunk costs in the design so far at the Brookpoint site. So again, something else for the boards to be aware of. And then we would anticipate that with a delay, right, we wouldn't be able to build those schools, bundle the schools, if you will, and see a little bit of that construction cost savings, which we've estimated to be upwards of perhaps up to 5%. The total all in, if we move from Brookpoint and pick a different site, that's the direction that the boards go, it's about a $5 to $8 million cost impact, depending, you know, again, here, this is depending where things would have fallen out versus where things ultimately didn't fall out. And then, of course, one year delay in the opening.
I have a question.
Go in place. That includes, that includes the delay. Okay. So one of the other questions that came up here was the Brookpoint High School enabling costs. There were some questions about basically the cost impacts to tear up the parking lot, tear up the tennis courts, and bus loop, which are really the three main areas of impact. I do want to preface that the numbers on this slide are really just an estimate, right? These are, we're estimating depreciated values of existing assets, and we're trying to get to some sort of estimate of, okay, what's the value of the asset that we're removing? What's the value of the assets that we're constructing? When it all shakes out at the bottom, you're talking about a net impact of about $710,000 of capital costs to make the Brookpoint site work for elementary school nineteen. We call those enabling costs, right? So any site you go to in this county, if we were to pick a site on the far western edge of the county, we had to run water and sewer all the way out there, we might have, let's say, $10 million in water and sewer enabling costs just to get out there, right? So this is the enabling cost to make the site ready and available and useful for elementary school nineteen. I will say that a lot of these costs, you wouldn't see in our CIP or 3R list tomorrow because there's a couple of things. Well, obviously depreciated value, that's an estimate of useful life. And then when we're talking about things like the parking lot lighting, parking lot lighting improvements and three to five year maintenance, these are costs that are built into our operating, maintenance operating budget, okay? So they're, they're not, you're not going to see them on our 3R list. I would say that the rebuild of the tennis courts right now is about 10 years out. So we'd be at that outer edge of the CIP if we were to put that on there today. Okay, now, next slide. Thank you. All right. So this slide, again, familiar slide that the board saw a couple of weeks ago, the space comparison. Again, we believe we have a very efficient use of space here that we're looking at. It is a much larger school than we've built before, but that's for a lot of reasons. Impacts from state and federal requirements with BDOE, as well as ADA accommodations, building code changes, all these different things ultimately come out to, we need a larger school. But when we do that, obviously, we're going to try and be as efficient as possible because we don't want to just have wasted space. Everyone here wants to be the stewards of the public dollars. So this school does that. When you look at the new prototype, you can see that we're at 126 total square foot per student, the square foot per classroom, just about 2,000. We're beating out Prince William and Miss McNair for elementaries in Fairfax. We're beating them out by 20, 30%. So we're doing very well. I think that this is a very cost efficient, space efficient design. But let's talk about how we got to that bigger footprint. So again, in April of '23, May of '23, these boards were finalizing, the board of supervisors was finalizing the CIP based off of budget numbers that were being generated probably a year prior than that, right? So as soon as the boards said, we're building nineteen, we want it done, open in 2026, we said, we got to go. We got to go fast because we have to get all the way to, it's about a 20 to 22 month construction schedule. So we usually need about a year to put plans together. So we really didn't have much time to waste at all. So you're looking at three years total, and we were right up against that three year mark. So in April, we hired Samaha consultants, or architects, I'm sorry. At that time, we had the 2009 facility design guidelines and the 2015 ed specifications. We're looking at 964 students. We had a meeting in May with Samaha, and this was a programming meeting where we sat down and we said, okay, let's list out all of the needs, let's look through the specifications, let's take a look at everything, put it all on the table. And we realized about that point that these ed specs and these facility design guidelines are probably not going to fit what we were actually looking at now with the current, the current programs we have in the school, the current BDOE requirements, the current state and federal requirements. So we worked very hard for a month or two with the architects. And in July of last year, we sent the prototype to our school board for the presentation and got some feedback from them. And then in late August, we got our first set of cost estimates on that. And that was just in time for September, which is when the school board officially saw the CIP on paper, if you will, for the first time in front of them at DIAS, right? We had some preliminary numbers up to that point. So from April to September, you can see that we moved very quickly, adjusted the size of the school, and ultimately came down to the revised CIP cost estimates that were then forwarded to the school board and across the street for consideration. So again, this-
I have a quick question before I put that to ask this question. Looking at the timeline, we had a meeting in February on the 23rd, and one of the questions on there was in reference to where the locations were going to be. And on May the 25th, we had another meeting. So this is our second meeting for the year. The same question arose, where the locations were going to be at no point in time. Was there a discussion? And I quote school board member Healy stating that, that it has not been discussed yet in terms of there was no decision made. So basically, you're telling me a decision was made. And when we were in that school board meeting, joint meeting, we weren't formed, and it's in the document, you know, that, that, I'm sorry, let me finish, that at that point in time, it was not decided yet. So is there, is there a conflict?
So the final decision of the school board, there was no decision on the Brookpoint site until, I believe, September?
We were having these conversations because of 18, and 18 and 19 will share a lot of this prep work. So that's why it appears that way. Right now, we're just thinking about 19, but this was already in motion for 18.
Right, okay.
So 18, we're talking about, not 19.
It's actually, they're talking about the school design from this timeline, the locations. So- Correct. Yes, that's good.
But there was no discussion about Brookpoint as-
Correct. Yeah, not, not on this-
I just wanted to make sure.
Right, correct. Yeah, there's overlap, and that's a good question.
Thank you.
All right. So one other thing here, so that's come up. There's been a lot of questions about the traffic impacts at Brookpoint. This is, at first glance, you think, oh my gosh, that's a cool, but it's actually, it's actually pretty simple. Right now, the road has a certain amount of capacity. The worst time of day for the, for that road right now is when high school, high school arrives and when high school leaves, right? That's the most, I mean, 2,150 students or whatever, 2,000, well, how many over students are at Brookpoint right now? Out onto that road system really quickly and bringing them in really quickly. Elementary school is half that size, right? So the overall road network impacts, which is what we look at when we do a traffic impact analysis, is not impacted. Both DDOT and our consultant have assured us of that. We are going to, at our consultant's recommendation, look through some limited striping along Black Harbor Drive, but again, no major impacts.
Are we not taking questions, or are we? Because I have questions too.
I think we all have questions. So, Madam Chair, I think Jason was going to, we're not getting into the modulators now, correct?
Well-
Because that's a conversation for later. The way I under-
I think the modulators really speaks to the permitting questions we have as well. I think it's-
What I'd like to do is let's just get through all the information, and then we'll come back. We go through every single slide in detail, however much questions-
Well, Madam Chair, the way I understand it, we moved permitting up first, and then we had this conversation.
For discussion, yes.
Yes, for discussion. And then Jason's doing his presentation on 18 and 19. But I don't want to get into the whole, our board has a lot of questions about 18 and 19.
Absolutely.
I want all to get in here regarding their permitting, but the allocation of the modulators, I don't think, that's a conversation for later. Our board is interested in that, but it's not the focus.
So do you want to, I think it was Cowery, but I just said that the modulators tie in. Just turn to the permitting. And you can circle, we can circle back on how the-
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
The trailers as well.
So what we were going to do, we just had the permitting as flat side, we're going to flow right into that for the discussion on, on what we, all right. So permitting. So we know that this is a shared concern. We know that Paul and I talk at least once a week, probably, it's maybe more, some weeks, depending. But this is a shared concern for us both sides, and that the, that the county board has been working for the last few years on a, an analysis with, working with staff to take a look at some potential efficiencies up there. And we also know that staffing and vacancies is a constant challenge, frankly for everybody, but I know there's been a particular challenge over there right now, believe. But we also know, right, that delays do cost time, obviously, time is money. And so there are a few different things here that I think we want to just be aware of and talk about. First, I want to say that county staff has actually done a really good job. And there's, I'll say, the last year or so that I've, that I've been working in this role, there's probably been two sides to this. There's been a lot of really good progress made on the timing of plan reviews and the timing of inspections. That is something that county staff has been knocking out of the park every day of the week. We have really had a lot of collaboration. Paul and I have been working very closely to make sure the reviewers and inspectors are working closely together. We've made a ton of headway there, I think. I think that there's a lot of good work there that's happened for us to be proud of. We did hit a couple of hiccups, and one with regards to the modulators, one with regards to high school six grading permit. And at the end of the day, what I really think would be beneficial as we, as we look through this, is we need to find a process or better process as we're going through public construction. There are some challenges that public entities face that private developers don't. A good example of this would be the bonding issues we ran into with the high school sixth grading, grading permit. The county's got a policy in place right now that causes issues with the school's ability to be able to actually post those bonds and do that work. And so that, that created, that created about a month, month, two months of delay trying to work through some of that. We got there. County staff worked with us. But again, an area for some improvements, some efficiencies, I think that we can gain if we go back and have a closer look at that. The modulators, a similar issue with the modulators. When we brought those in February of last year, we were, up to that point, hadn't had to install footers before. It was a, it was a newer requirement that was, came down. As we worked through it with staff, staff suggested that we appeal it to the building code appeals board, ultimately did. But that was about, was about a three month process, I think, about a three month process for us to get through. And because of some issues with the way that the building code appeals board hadn't, hadn't been set up yet or wasn't properly staffed. And so there were some issues that we ran into with getting the building code appeals board just to a position where we, they could actually hear the concern, right? And then ultimately, we just had to, at that point, construct the footers or we were going to run out of time. So these are some things that I think that, just a couple of examples of some things that we can continue to work through. Again, major kudos to Paul and his team on, I think we've made some major progress on reviews and inspections. There's a lot of support there. But I think moving forward, there may be some opportunities here for us to work a little bit more on our public processes. Paul, I don't know if you want to add anything? I know you and I talked over it yesterday.
Yeah, really quick, and thank you all, board members, for allowing me to be here. If you don't know who I am, my name's Paul Sante. I'm Chief Director of Community Development and Stafford Government side. And to Jason's point, we work very closely together on school projects, whether it is high schools and elementary schools, or modulators, or building modifications of our current schools. And we're very happy to work with them. And we do make sure that when a school project comes into the permit center and is submitted, we treat it with care, and we put it at the utmost priority when it's necessary. So I appreciate that, Jason. And I do share the same comments he mentioned as well. We have actively been for a number of years, almost three now, working on a process study to reevaluate what we're doing, mostly on the commercial side of our permits, but that would include schools, right? Because we basically would follow the same procedure for a school project as we would for a commercial project. And to his point, just like everybody, we are a little under-resourced with our staffing. It is challenging to hire and keep the right people, but we're still keeping up, right? And we still have determined that these, these projects, even the modular projects, high school six, elementary school eighteen and nineteen are priority projects for us. We've designated that. So our turnaround time for plan review is 10 days. So I do want to ensure both boards that we are treating these very closely and with some due diligence to make sure the turnaround time is, is pretty rapid. I will politely push back a little bit on some of the ideas on the slideshow as far as some of the delays. I think this is a very intricate process. There are building codes. There are all sorts of different codes out there that can seemingly get in the way with regards to a timely and efficient process. But when it's black and white, and it's something that our staff has to enforce, we'll do that. And our building official makes determinations that might not be accepted, but she makes them with the utmost importance that the number one priority is health and safety of everyone in those buildings. Now, with that, the building official is very discretionary in some ways with certain decisions. But decisions by the building official can be appealed to the building code appeals board. And to Jason's point, right, the unfamiliarity of having cross pre-footers from what would perceive to be a temporary building might not what was done before. But we believe and our building official concurs that it is a code requirement for those things, and they are, there is a need to have them be installed, and there is a cost associated with that. To Jason's point, they did apply for an appeal to the code appeals board. The board actually sided with the schools on that appeal, which is pretty. However, the decision to install the footers was already agreed upon and done well before the board even had, had heard the case, right? Because of time being against kind of what we've been running up to. So, Ms. Healy, you had mentioned in the board meeting on Thursday that details are very important. I have plenty of details, even more not with me today that I'm happy to share with both boards about what the turnaround time is for staff, for planners, for inspections, and what we get back from the schools in terms of a second, third, and fourth review. So I'm happy to share those at any time. I want to be transparent in all the information that's out there. But really, at the end of the day, we all have the same problem. And the same problem is to get the right structures and capacity built for a growing population, and we're committed to helping do that. So, and I apologize, I do have another committee meeting at 6:00, so I can't take too many questions. And I'm happy to follow up with some of the concerns that the school board has expressed earlier in meetings.
You said you're under a review and have been for a few years on the-
The process study.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
And how much longer is that study going to be? And what, when will we hear results of that?
So we are finished. That study will be delivered to the board at the, is it the retreat? I think, the event, at the February 10th meeting. So-
Okay.
We'll deliver all that to the board. There's a lot of great information on, I think, some of the recommendations coming from the consultant on-
Capital projects?
Capital projects specifically, right? So, and while it does affect county capital construction projects, I do think there should be certain carve-outs for public infrastructure, public projects. And we're looking at those, and we do feel like there could be a separate process that is a little bit more efficient on our end to help navigate through some of these challenging issues. But we're finished.
Thank you for working so closely in getting those turnaround times really big steps.
If I could ask just a quick question. I know that we've kind of solved the footers issue in another way, but if we went through this process, waited for the decision, that was for that set of modulators, now we're coming up on having to install another set. Does that decision carry you this year, or would we have to go back for the same, again, for the second set?
Great question. So even if the board of code appeals makes a decision on one appeal, it does not set a precedent for another building because there are differences in sites and things that might, may or may not-
So it's site specific, it's not-
Now, one thing that-
It's not general to school trailers, for example?
One thing that we're hoping for is should the next set of trailers come in for an appeal, I'm sorry, I'm going to say trailer, modular, come in for appeal, they go in front of the code appeals board, let's say they hypothetically come up with the same decision- Come in for appeal, they go in front of the code appeals board, let's say they hypothetically come up with the same decision, the building official can appeal that decision to the state. And if the state agrees with the school's decision, that would set a precedent, and we wouldn't have to go through a motion. So
That's good to know.
This, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, Supervisor Gary.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to go back really quick, because I had a question.
We're gonna circle back on the rest of the, I think, we're trying to be mindful of your time. Do we have any other questions?
I have a question on the footer, just on the footer question.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
The footer question. Does all of them have the footers, are they required or those trailers, are they required?
Yes, they are required.
And is it, why are they actually have footers?
So they're considered industrialized buildings, they're not your typical portable classroom or a manufactured home. So if it's an industrialized building over six hundred square feet, the code requires that cross-free footers be installed. If, if the schools have suggested that there be an alternative use of what they call an ABS pad, instead of digging in the ground, pouring concrete, having a cross-free footer, that's what was appealed to the code appeals board. And also, the modulars are not considered temporary according to the building code. I know they're not gonna be on-site forever, but temporary according to the building code is twelve months, and we know the modulars will exceed twelve months. So, and we do require the modulars be poured on all types of these modular industrialized buildings. We have one currently at the county utility skilled operations, and we require our own utilities department to shore those cross-free footers.
So the footers are like a pad.
It's just a, yeah, exactly. So it's a pier that the foundation would sit on if it were a permanent structure.
So is it, is the, is the trailer anchored to that case?
Yes, some concrete.
Wind, wind or something, wind damage?
Sure. Well, it's more of a safety. Oh, absolutely, no, absolutely, absolutely. So, and I'll, I'll, I'll just chime in here for a sec, because this was a point of contention, as Paul mentioned, that the code appeals board did ultimately side with schools unanimously and said that they, they did not believe that there was an issue here. It seems to be an oversight in the code, I'll say. Although I don't know that we necessarily agree on the particulars, and I wanna get into the code analysis here. But we did, we did talk about, this, this may be something, and this is where I think some more collaboration could, could help moving forward. One of the options, as an example that we offered to get around this, was that schools would install these, and every year, do a reinspection of all the footers, all of the entire modulars and everything, so that it is a temporary occupancy for one year. And then, next year, you come in, you resubmit it, you've done all the inspections. And, and that meets all the intent of the code. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get there in the timeline we allowed had. I, I, I will say though, and Paul and I talked about this the last couple days a little bit, I think one of the, in order to kind of move the conversation forward, I think it would be productive. Staff on both sides often get put into a, a pressure cooker, right? We get into these difficult situations where we have a very, very condensed timeline to deliver modulars or elementary school or high school, what, what be it. And allowing, one thing I think that we would request to board supervisors is, is work with your staff, and we're, Paul and I have talked through some ideas, to find some ways to, we will empower them to be able to work a little bit more outside, not outside of the code, that's not, but work a little bit more collaboratively. There are some things that are currently in the code right now that I think can be adjusted. Paul and I have talked about them, that will really allow some of these processes to go more smoothly moving forward. And I, I think that, if anything, right now, we all agree that we don't wanna necess, unnecessarily spend time and money doing things. We don't, we don't have that luxury right now. We really don't need to do this thing straight this way.
No, I'm sure. If I could just ask, on behalf of our boards, is, is our board interested in seeing the write-up that Mr. Sante has indicated that he has on the schools on the county side as far as the reviews that are taking place?
How long is he protecting them? How long are we taking to do it?
So, well, just in, in, in 2023, for the modulars themselves, we've had sixteen modular applications in 2023. That would be the first initial ones back in February, March for Hartwood and Stafford Elementary School in Park Ridge. And now we've got the new set coming up for next full year for a total of sixteen. We, we pulled data, the average amount of time for the county to review those plans are ten days, which we feel is very comparable, even better than what we usually would provide for, for most customers. The average day, so if those comments are done in ten days, we hand those back to the schools. Now we wait for those comments to be adjusted and submitted back to us. The average time for that has been thirty-four days that we've been waiting for those comments to come back in. We currently have at least four applications in right now where we can't even route the applications for plan review because the fees haven't been paid. So when an application comes in, great, thank you, but we need the application fee to be paid before we route the application. For four applications for modulars, we don't have fees paid yet, so we can't route them. Those were submitted back in November, so we've been waiting three months just for a few months.
That's, that's a little bit of a, I, I'll, I'll say, one of those, for example, the grafted, grafted village modular, which, and, and keep in mind, and I, I wanna be careful here. But the grafted village modulars, as an example, were one that we submitted back, and I believe it was September or October, I can't remember this year. And at that time, we were uncertain whether or not that modular units would actually be moving forward. It was since determined that in our November, December meetings, that one was not moving forward. That one is probably still, still an open application, it needs to be closed out, as an example. But these aren't, everything that's moving forward in the county right now is moving forward on the appropriate timeline. And I don't think we're arguing about, or have concerns about the turnaround timeline for, for the reviews or the inspections again. One thing I start off by saying was, we've been very happy with that recount. I think, though, that when it, when it takes us two months to get from a approved set of plans and notice to proceed with the contract to a grading permit, there's some things we can do better than that, right? And I, I think we all agree on that. And I think at the end of the day, what we really wanna get down to is what are some ways that we can collaborate and work together? And that's, that's really, I think, what we're asking for here, is just, just that we continue to work through that. Again, I don't think that there's, I don't think that there's finger pointing here, I think there's a lot of good things going on, but there are some things that continue to need some improvement, so.
I think that's why we, this board attempted to expedite our request this year, so that we can get ahead of what we learned in the last process. Because while we did have our trailers classrooms open for the first day of school, as Supervisor Gary expressed, some of them were not open for back-to-school night, and we weren't able to have the perimeter fencing up in advance of school opening as well, which is something that's, you know, a goal for us, when we can, when we can make that work.
Yeah, I think that's a goal for everybody. So Paul, I think, are we finished with Mr. Sante?
Does anyone else have a question to Mr. Sante? Ms. Healy?
Yes. Okay, and you've, you've had your hand up for it.
Thank you. I was just wondering if we can have you bring back some of the suggestions for how we can refine this, for when we do go over that, where you're from the consultant?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely, absolutely.
And Ms. Allen?
Well, not for Paul, but on the topic, and this is by far county attorney, because my concern is, is, for one, we need to figure out if, if we're building public infrastructure, why are we speeding between, we, we, and that's not a conversation. Well, in terms of adjusting timeline and adjusting a process, my concern is from a county attorney's perspective in that would that open us up to developers or anyone else possibly, you know, suing us or, or, or taking actions against us and saying, even if it's in the interest of our citizens, saying that the county, you know, unfairly is having different processes for their capital construction permitting process. That's my concern here.
And Ms. Allen, we can look into that. Ultimately, we're happy to work with Paul's team on developing a process, and we'll be part of that conversation and that discussion. And we can look into that and see what potential liability could be there.
Ms. Healy had a question before, so if you'll mind it.
You mentioned the, the appeal, and you want that appeal, but you couldn't feel that appeal. I'd like to ask if we can work something out in advance, so we don't have to deal with the expense and the time of review because it doesn't help anybody. And we, and, and I, I actually complimented the county at the last meeting, because I know how hard you work, you know, to try to help us, you know, the schools. But this, this whole permitting process, since, you know, hopefully we'll learn as we go along. But if, in fact, we do have to have footers, then we need to factor that into the cost, because I think that was part of the, the issue as well. So I would ask, rather than anticipating potential appeals and appeals and more appeals, that we try to avoid them completely and come up with something that, that both sides can, can live with as we move forward. Because we do have plans for modulars and, you know, it's a whole community purpose. Then be open and operating in advance of the, of the school models.
Senator Sherr?
Just a comment, Mr. Tyree's in a good position because he used to be in the county. So he understands exactly what the county's going through. And as a matter of fact, he could shortcut some of the items, knowing what to anticipate. So I'm sure that the work that he's been doing behind the scenes with, with Mrs. Sante has been beneficial for the school system, from what I understand.
Paul and I have really, like I said, I mean, our teams are working very well together. And I don't think, I, again, there's been a lot of very positive things. And that's really what I'd rather spend some time even celebrating, focusing on. I mean, the, the review timelines and turnarounds and the inspection timeline have been fantastic. We just gotta keep working together, I think that we've got room to grow. And I think as long as the boards are willing to do that, yeah, we just head in the positive direction.
So it sounds like we're, we, we know we need to make some improvements, and we'll figure out how that can all take place, and we'll see information in our advance, and Randy, you had something to add?
No, just a couple of quick answers on these, specifically, it's an interest fund, it's a self-supporting fund, so if it's on our projects, if it comes to that fund, it's a little bit self-supporting, so that answers sort of the question a little bit. On the footers, I mean, the, the basic lay-under understanding for me is our building officials have decided that in the best interest of safety, moving forward, that the footers are required. So I don't see her changing that, we don't, I don't need this, you're suggesting it, but we don't make a practice to overrule, nor do I have the authority to be able to rule a building official on this. So I would anticipate that that is still gonna be an issue, that if the school system doesn't wanna put that in, it's gonna have to be appealed. Because her opinion is that in the best interest of safety, those footers need to be moved. So I think on that issue, I think there are some other items that we can, we can work on, as Jason pointed out. We can make some progress, we've committed on the securities issue related to the high school, to look at that issue, how we can move forward and kind of work that out. I think with the high school, it was, it was a quick change of practice, and so we couldn't pull it off in time for the timeline on the high school. But we've committed to looking at that process and how we can make that better going forward, and hopefully save some money on bids where they don't have to include that in everything.
Thank you very much. I have one more quick question. Sure. So you mentioned the average of the ten days and the average of the thirty-four days. Is that standard, or is that something that we could maybe get cut down a little, staffing were a little better, is that affecting that process? I know you're working with everything in that.
Yeah. It's, it's, I mean
For this or anything?
Yeah, I mean, a, a turnaround time for twenty, thirty days to get comments back into the county to evaluate when the recommended changes have been made, isn't really too terrible. We have private development that we may not see comments come at, come back into the county for months, right? So obviously, the counties are, the, the schools are committed to trying to get things in motion on their end and submit it back as quickly as possible. I just wanted to make sure I highlighted that the assumption of any sort of delay on our end, I just wanted to provide the data on that. Because I don't
Ten days is pretty good, isn't it?
Ten day turnaround for us.
It sounds like it was very good. And so, thank you for highlighting that, obviously, you know, President's been here and how hard you've worked. My, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, so it sounds like other things are taking a long time still. So you did have to give priority, so other things must have taken a backstage to some degree, so you need more support and staffing, again.
I can't argue with it.
Okay. Dr. Warner?
Mr. Sante here just had a quick question. So, from understanding this, the footers, the additional structural support is because it's not really a temporary structure, it's more of a long-term structure?
Well, that, and the fact that they're considered industrialized buildings and a building code, so they require footers to be installed. And I don't necessarily think the schools disagree with some sort of support. I think the suggestion is, let's go with this option instead of poured concrete. And the building official's position is that is not adequate.
Anybody else? Thank you very much for your time.
Yes.
Mrs. Sigmund?
Yes.
Before we go into the modulars, I would like to share some information with everybody in the room, and
Quick question, I can go back to the
Yes, yes, yes.
For the modulars?
Yes. So first of all, I just wanna thank you guys for dinner, appreciated that, it was delicious, thank you very much. One of the reasons we're here for this meeting this evening is there, our board had a lot of questions at the prior work session regarding the decision of the site for elementary school number nineteen. There were obviously a lot of other questions that were, that were raised. And that's why I thought it was important for us to meet again. So I'm, I'm kinda gonna give you, what you're gonna see in front of you on this big sheet is a recap of all the meetings that the school board had in two thousand twenty-three, because I think it, it kind of summarizes everything. But I first wanna just start with, just reminding everybody that Dr. Taylor and Chris Palmer attended a closed session meeting of our board, January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. And the purpose was to discuss the possible school sites. While I can't share anything with you regarding our closed section, I can tell you that there was no mention of Brookpoint High School as the elementary school site. Before you see a timeline of the school board meetings in two thousand twenty-three, this timeline reflects the school board held nine closed sessions after work sessions and three closed sessions after regular school board meetings. It's noted that the school staff recommended the Embry Mill site, and the school board voted twice against this site. Of note on, is on October tenth, two thousand twenty-three, there was a work session, and there was a change made for the capacity of the elementary schools from nine hundred and sixty-four students to one thousand seventy. An art lab was added, and the Brookpoint High School site was in the work session documents. None of these items were discussed with the public at a school board meeting, only at a work session. That same night, the school board took action with a six-to-one vote to move forward with the Brookpoint High School site, the larger capacity with the art lab and a seven million dollar bus parking lot to be located at elementary school number eighteen. As far as I can tell, there have been no town halls on the Brookpoint High School site with the public, the Brookpoint High School community and teachers, or the immediately adjacent community. The school board began this process in October, and it has been communicated that the schools have spent over a million dollars on architectural engineering and design. And the contract was approved on October tenth. And it was pulled from the consent agenda, and it was moved to action. And as you can see on the spreadsheet, that was the October tenth meeting. And I'm almost done. This brings to question, where is the process? How is the public engaged, and where is the due diligence for the taxpayers' dollars? It all seems very hurried to me, and I'm, I'm very concerned about the lack of community input. There may be major noise disruptions, logistical impacts at Brookpoint High School for those students for two and a half years during construction. Additionally, taxpayer dollars are being used to move tennis courts, rebuild fields, et cetera. Now is the time for your board to help us understand your process and where we are to date. And I might just mention on this sheet that you all believe this within your, in the slides, if you go to the page that discusses the elementary prototype design timeline, it states on here, the May two thousand twenty-third, the elementary prototype design timeline, it states on here, the May 2023, the criteria that you mentioned, that's actually on the July 11th board meeting sheet. That's attached to your documents. Um, also on, and there was no vote of the school board at that point in time on that, moving the, changing the capacity and increasing taxpayer dollars. Um, the July meeting, it says the prototype update and presentation was sent to the school board for input. Again, there was no board vote that I'm aware that ever took place on increasing the capacity. So I just bring those things to your board. I've attached all the, each one of these um, is the attachment to, this is July 11th. Um, you can see that your board had elementary school 18 and 19 and the land that was proper. Um, and it says land to be determined. And at that point in time, the seats were still at 964. The second item, uh, which is October, excuse me, August 8th, August 8th, your proposed 25 fiscal year 25 fiscal year 34 CIP on here, elementary 18, no problem. Elementary 19, it says sites identified. Some of your board members made comments that they didn't understand what sites identified was. I went back and I read all of your minutes. Um, and then the last one, while you guys had it dated September 11th, this was actually the October 10th, 2023 meeting. And it's a three-page document. Um, and this is at the work session where you discuss elementary school 19, site selection and test fit. And then you just, you put it over here. So and then um, at our last meeting, we got this book from the school board. And in this book, you guys did vote on dibs at your October 10th school board meeting after your work session. And you voted on um, elementary school 18 is in here. It's 1,070 students and the size has gone from 101,000 square feet to 128,000 square feet. But yet your board never discussed increasing the site and voting on the, the size of the schools and on the prototype. And then also, if you turn that sheet over to the back, elementary school 19, it says again, capacity 1,070 and it says location to be determined. So I feel that all the information is here on what happened this last year. I find it very disappointing um, that we're having to have this discussion. We are here to work with the school board, but I do believe there has not been transparency. If this elementary school was being added to a high school in my district, I would be very upset because my community was not informed and taxpayers were not given an opportunity to weigh in. So I will leave it at that and we can have discussion about this at this point in time.
Senator.
I would like to actually say like, I love that your timeline matches with our timeline. I also want to remind everybody that this timeline was for high school six, elementary 18 and elementary 19, as well as any additional real estate deeds we may have had with all of those. Took us quite some time to um, acquire land and, and do that. Ms. Hall said, if we have town halls on the location of high school six and elementary 18, or did we decide to put them together?
We decided to put them together. There was no town hall.
Because those are conversations we have on a location of schools. Um, so these are conversations we have. We vote on our CIP.
I understand, but those schools, there was nothing on those schools. That was, that was empty land. There's a big difference.
And it's not, you know, there are, we get negative feedback and we get positive feedback on every decision, probably both of our boards make every day of the week. There's never going to be a place that is 100% approved. Um, I think Jason had, did you have something you wanted to add about, or do you have something on this about the timeline?
No, I mean, just, yeah, the timelines do match. Um, no, no real concerns there. Uh, and again, we did point out it was, again, just keep in mind that um, there was a lot going on between April, again, uh, April to October, right? Where there were a lot of changes because we were under, under a very compressed timeline to, to deliver the design and ultimately the construction of the elementary school. Um, we would love to have more time, but I, I just, you know, we had the time we had. And so there were a lot of decisions that had to be made.
Yes. Ms. Randall?
Um, so one of the things that I kind of want to remember in that, I know you'll remember this too. Um, you know, when we talk about assets leaving, and I'm talking loud because this thing is loud over my head. So I'm not trying to be screaming at anybody. Um, but um, when we rebuilt Stafford High School on the Stafford High School grounds, I was very involved with CIP as we were on the school board then. And I know that for us as citizens, we, you know, the tearing up of resources, and that's going to happen when we rebuild North Stafford. It's going to tear up a parking lot or it's going to tear up a ball field that are perfectly good assets for 50% of their lifetime. And the same thing happened at Stafford High School. And the biggest pushback, and I was just a citizen, but the biggest pushback I got was how dare you build a new high school on our practice fields? And now we don't have any place for our kids to practice. So what we did as citizens, as an interested citizen, I didn't even have a kid in the school. I didn't even have a kid in the school. As an interested citizen concerned, I went to the board of supervisors, Bob Thomas was my representative, and I said, I've heard that the board of supervisors ran out of money on Chichester, Chichester Park and that one field has not been developed. And could we use that field for some of our teams to practice? And the answer was yes. So we got the board of supervisors to help us answer part of that problem. But there was other things that were tore up in parking. Not only that, when that school was rebuilt on the site, we lost parking. We had to reroute buses because when the school was open, we had to tell the kids that you have to, and I did have a freshman then, that you have to um, come to school 15 to 20 minutes early so that you can get into the building on time. Cause you have to walk by this construction site where they were taking down the school and they had people on our property. And we knew the building has asbestos and a million other issues. It's coming down and the kids are walking by it to get into their new school on time. So disruptions of property are, and we're, and since we're talking that this not only is for ES 19, but we're also to talking about destruction of the property at potentially at Drew and Rising Star where we rebuild those schools is something that's going to be the name of the game going forward as we, Miss Sigmund or Miss Alsteg just said, we're running out of land. So did we have town halls about ES 18 and 19? We did. We did that before they even started putting the construction of it together. Did we have a town hall about location of high school six, location of ES 18, or location of ES 19? No. Did we have a, a town, we were, as a town hall, um, we were told how we were going to work through, and this was after everything was decided. We were told how we were going to work through with our students, how they would manage the Stafford High School building site, how they're going to have to deal with the construction as well as the takedown. There wasn't noise studies done or any of that for a new high school being built next to an old high school. And, and you know, so I'm, I'm not saying that those aren't suggestions that we couldn't take on, but I'm just saying that in the practice that we've seen a school being rebuilt on its site, Monqueer being rebuilt somewhere else was something else. But for a school being built on a site while it's being occupied as well, I mean, that, we learned a lot from that. We'll learn a lot from this because we're going to see it again when we potentially redo Drew and Rising Star. But not to say that some of the things that you want us to um, make transparent with the public that we couldn't do. We could absolutely do that.
Mr. O, that I can, do you want to?
I think Supervisor Gary had a question and I'll go after um, Miss Alsteg.
Thank you. I just, I just have some comments to make that I, I think is really important to, to lay out here of all of this because there, there are a few things that are, that we're discussing that are concerning to me. We're talking about um, stewarding taxpayer dollars at the same time debating whether this should happen essentially uh, on the proposed location where it would cost another five to eight million dollars to move it. So that's a moot point and I don't want to hear that argument if this is what we're talking about. It doesn't matter because we're going to spend five, eight million more dollars if we decide to move it. So we're not going to talk about we're looking out for taxpayer dollars if that's what we're pushing for. That doesn't even make any sense to me. My constituents want a couple of things. And so I appreciate the um, no, I don't appreciate it. Actually, it sounds like an attempt to shame me into being indignant about the placement of this location for 19, though everyone knows I was against it. However, the school board has done their job. And yes, I was upset about it. Um, but my constituents want a couple of things. They want to build schools because they're overcrowded and I know how bad it is. And they don't want us to waste their money. And while I don't agree with the way this came about and we can go around and around and around about that, this feels like a show to prepare to pull back money from the schools. And I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to support that. They've done the work to get to where they are right now to find something to recoup most of that, what was it, 13 million and we're down to 11 something, 11.2 I think is pretty good, right? Recouping most of that with this site. Is it ideal? Um, no, I would have done it differently. But I am not elected to the school board. My job is to get you all resources. And I hope in the future I see something that makes more sense to me. And that's the best that I can ask. So yes, it is frustrating, but um, I, I just, I feel like there's a little bit of a show going on talking about taxpayer dollars and listening to staff. This board, our board voted last year for a budget that used one-time funding for recurring expenses. So if we want to talk about listening to staff, I feel like that's a moot point too. So we should be doing those things. That's absolutely true. We should listen to staff. We should be stewarding taxpayer dollars much better. And that's why I support what the school board has decided to do in a six to one vote. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Alsteg.
Supervisor Gary, thank you very much. I think that might actually be a hard act to follow, but I think I can be as passionate as you just were as well. I'm super disappointed as well to, but for a very different reason. You know, we are duly elected board of officials as well. And the public did trust us to go into closed sessions with information that they don't have access to, to absorb all the information, gather information. So your timeline here actually shows how much time, effort and energy this school board went into, went through to make sure that we had crossed all of our Ts and dotted all of our Is. So as a reminder to everyone sitting here and listening, elementary school 18 wasn't even really initially approved as elementary school 18. It was the Hartwood replacement. So because we have a capacity crisis at desperate levels for our kids in our elementary school, and, and I commend Supervisor English for both supporting, but also not supporting because he's right. We need two schools out there in Hartwood now desperately. But, but we have had to move and adjust. And every time I look at this pretzel that we've made at the Stafford County School System, we make it tighter and tighter and tighter. I, I don't know how much more we can go through before it just dies altogether from lack of oxygen. So 18 wasn't even 18 originally, but it needed to go in the Hartwood District because of the issues that we're having with capacity there. That was number one. 18 and 19 were not approved together. We are constantly misrepresenting that information to the public. They were voted on months apart. And that was after this school board went through the effort to get the public to advocate for schools, for teacher raises, and for the appropriate use of their tax dollars. Much of the decision-making that went into 19 was based on somewhat of the reality that we're facing today. But more importantly, the planning for a proper Stafford County system moving forward. We are living the reality of four decisions made five boards ago and 20 years ago because nothing was done on the right time. Okay, so we were given this little ball. Who dealt with it? We've been juggling balls and people are throwing more balls at us. Okay, this staff has put together such a comprehensive list of places, reasons why, reasons not why, what can we do, what can we not do? This board assumed so much information, consumed so much information to avoid having to confuse the public with it because that's what they elected us to do. Now, I fully anticipate that the public, as I'm happy with our decision, that they will help us, guide us, move us forward in whatever direction we need to go for next time. But I have to echo Supervisor Gary's comments with my own take on that, which this feels like a slap on the hand and a temper tantrum when this board did what they were, they were elected to do, when we were given the money to build a school to help these kids have a better life. So I don't know how much more time that we can provide to you, although we'll do this however long you want, how many more times we can say, given all of the information presented to us, they need to move 18 and 19 together when they were approved so far apart, force all of this into the one little thing we have. Now, I will say, I moved here before Courthouse Road was four land. I suffered through it. It is what it is. We're a growing county. There are things that are coming on, construction's inconvenient, things are happening. I mean, people come in, they know those things. They get it. They anticipate that. So I don't feel like we can use that as an excuse or a question because high school six and the problems that caused for Treslow Road and what those people argued about, but high school six is still going where it's going. So for me, at the end of the day, this is just a lot of time spent trying to undermine this school board. And it is really detrimental to this county and to the people that live here. Okay. Go ahead. Is that okay?
That's great.
So I heard um, Miss Alsteg mention that they were voted on apart and we're trying to squeeze them together. Um, we decided to.
Senator Young.
I'm sorry?
Can you speak up a little bit?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm following up what Miss Alsteg mentioned that, also Alsteg, that um, they're trying to put them together 18, 19. We voted for 18, 19 and 19 together.
Maybe not.
With the same, uh, we did. We did. The board.
You approved it open at the same time. You did not approve the.
In 2023, the board of supervisors approved funding for 18 and 19 in the amount of 51 million.
Not at the same time.
For 18, I cannot finish.
You can, but you're not. You have to fill the box.
I, I went through, I went through the documentation.
Go ahead.
Okay? And 19 for 56 million respectively, seating vote at 964. The adopted CIP originally had these two slated for FY 26 and FY 2028 at the same pricing with inflation already taken into consideration with Embry Mill as the one to be considered in your own documentation. Okay? And your latest CIP dated FY 34 started showing EM 18 at 81 million and 19 at Brookpoint estimated at 78. At one point in time, when you decided to put 18 and 19 together, that would have been 14 million in savings. I'm not hearing anything about that savings anymore. Let's put that aside. If it's there, fine. If it's not there. What I'm hearing though is that, oh, this is going to cost us five or eight million. I was the board. I was the chair. At any time that any of you all, uh, Ms. Randall come to me and say, hey, we are thinking about Brookpoint, you know, let's have a conversation. Nothing. Okay? So maybe you had conversations with Mr. Cohen or somebody else, but I have not had that conversation. And if Embry Mill was a problem, we had close meetings on Embry Mill that we cannot discuss right now. So I do not know why Embry Mill was supposed to be, oh, there's an easement in there or something. While Brookpoint right now or the high school is still going through some litigation, what you all planned it already. So you can't tell me today that there was a problem with Embry Mill and you all could not design on there knowing. and you all could not design on there knowing that there were two parcels and there was one that was ready to go. And I am saying that you want to throw bad money or, or good money after bad. I am not willing to do that, okay? Destroying the assets that we already have in the county, I could also be very passionate about where I want it. But one thing, I am going to protect taxpayers' money. This is not a show. You can talk about, you know, the past that was done incorrectly and now we have to continue to do what's wrong. No, I am not going to do that with the allegation that, oh yes, we need to seat more kids. You had conversations that you could have had with us about that. It, it wasn't happened, okay? So approving Brookpoint now, and you're not, you took a lot of cost into consideration, I understand that. But some of the costs that you have not been taking into consideration is what's going to cost for these kids to have to drive back and forth? Um, you're going to create a tennis court? Are you planning on creating a, a, a walkway to the new tennis courts because the yield goes down? I mean, you are putting costs where you want the cost and you're not telling us about the rest of the costs. I have most comments, but I'm gonna say.
All of the costs are in the, in the presentation that we gave you today. Those, it was a whole separate slide on the Brookpoint costs.
Cost of transportation for students?
Cost of transportation of students is, is a totally different item. And the thing is, is that you're not, we're not saying that there's an escalated cost because we haven't said who's going to go there. It's no diff, I mean, I understand and if we're talking truth and facts here, I have no idea, no idea that, and as a board, we were just given permission by the Board of Supervisors to do eighteen and nineteen. There wasn't uh, some little dangling thing that said only if it's in Amber Mill. There was nothing that said that. It was permission to do ES eighteen, ES nineteen. And we worked hard to find property, as you saw. There was a number of them. As you see, there's a number of closed sessions where we are, we are working, seven women, working hard, trying to figure it out. And it was never against a person or anything like that to choose a site. It wasn't, thank you. But I will say, you know, again, you're talking about assets. We're going to tear up a track and a football field and all kinds of things when we go to put a Rising Star and a Drew property. We're going to tear up another Parks and Rec football field and other assets when we go to put a new Drew, Drew Middle School. We are tearing up tree properties and to put, you know, we're tearing up assets every time we put a school.
I totally get that.
And I will tell you, I, I sincerely, if I had known, if there was some indication given to me back in February or April or May, when you made the decision for ES eighteen and ES nineteen, you can have that only if, I wish I would have known that. I wish I would have known that. But not knowing that, we made a decision. And I had no idea that our decision was going to push a piss off button and, and give us a vote to, no, you can't proceed forward with nineteen. I would have not, I would have done different.
Ms. Randall. Staff recommended Amber Mill. Twice you all voted against it.
Staff recommended you not spend eleven million.
Okay. Staff recommended twice. In conversations, you all saying, we take staff recommendation sometimes when we want to. Amber Mill was available all along. So tell me then why? Number twenty will still be Amber Mill, but you want to break up Brookpoint and put nineteen there? I'm not going to tell you about the comments or the rumors that I'm hearing. I'm not going to bring them up here.
You did already.
Well, and those kids,
And I'm hearing that, not what I'm saying.
And I am hearing the same rumors and that's what you heard because certain people are saying that. Those kids don't have to leave out of Anthony Burns to go across the street so that you can fill it with who you want.
Oh my God.
So let me say this, okay?
The bottom line is,
Let me, let me say this. Let me, let me say this, okay? I have a handout, I can hand it out if you want to. But the deficit, capacity twenty twenty-four, the deficit in twenty twenty-four for enrollment coming into only Garrisonville is negative three seventy-seven. Projected enrollment twenty twenty-eight in Garrisonville, negative five hundred and sixty-three. Projected enrollment in twenty thirty-two, one thousand seventy, okay? In Garrisonville. You already have seventy-five percent of the schools in Garrisonville overcrowded and with modulars. And the staff told you that's where the school needed to go. And you all decided to do elsewhere and decide to do all of it that you're doing now. So with me, my recommendation, I am not going to throw bad money or good money behind that.
That's true. I think we kind of need to,
I know, I'm this guy. I just want to say, I think we kind of need to allow others to be able to speak, so.
Yes, absolutely. As the acquired representative, I can tell you that ten of my constituents have contacted me, ten, okay? Y'all acting like it's hundreds, but ten. Um, now maybe they're contacting y'all, but everyone knows they can always call me whether they like me or not. I get yelled at, cursed at, I still say thank you and call me again. So I've had ten people contact me. And it's mostly just about how the construction is going to affect, um, whether it is their middle school student or their high school student. But when I asked them, uh, because it's all about sports, truthfully, sports and parking. When I asked them, what do you value more, a five-year-old learning how to read in a classroom or a five-year-old learning how to read in, in a hallway? Or would you rather, you know, your child continue to play soccer or whatever? They're like, you know what? This sucks, but it, it makes sense, right? I'm not saying I, I liked the idea. I mean, it wasn't my idea, but I did vote for Brookpoint because I needed seats. I also voted for Amber Mill because I needed seats. I vote for school on food, like I've said four times, because I need the seats. That's where my constituents are caring about. They want their children to be in the actual classroom and the actual building with an actual bathroom. That's, that's what acquired residents want. I know everyone has an opinion about what's supposed to happen with the quiet. The two acquired reps kind of get it. We just need the seats. The personal things or whatever, I, I do have to say, I do fully understand um, the passion coming from Dr. Young because when Dr. Young was chair, I don't know how we got those schools approved. Like that was, that was awesome. It was like I woke up one day and they were like, oh my goodness, this happened. And I was like, well, she has magic. So I, I get that passion, but we just, we need the seats at this point. If we move the school, we lose a year. So that's more students, probably, I'm assuming, I don't make the votes like we have to vote together, but if we lose a year, I'm assuming that's more students in trailers at Stafford Elementary. I can tell you that a staff member at Stafford Elementary, I spoke with them and they had tears in their eyes. Like we can't handle more. You've got to do something. You, you know, because everyone is calling me, constituents are calling me saying, I heard nineteen's not going to get funded. You know, and I'm like, okay, I, I heard that too. I don't know what's going to happen. That's going to be their vote. Nothing I can say about that, right? I'm just being totally honest. I, I, that's not my, not my job. But they're all worried because their kids are uncomfortable or their spouses working in overcrowded schools are uncomfortable. Yeah, this school was needed fifteen years ago, if we're being honest with you. But we just need the seats. This petty infighting and I want it where I want it, like, I just, we need to grow up and not be like, have the middle school mentality and just get on the same accord to get these, this school built in a timely fashion.
Ms. Allen?
Thank you, Ms. Yorin. I, I like think of myself as a rational person, right? Like I don't put emotions in any of my votes or thought process. I don't. Um, because if I do, I probably don't, some of the, you're just losing your faith. Uh, you're probably imagining. But I say that to say that when we had this meeting the last time, I knew I was pretty, I think that's probably the most passionate I've been against schools and pretty upset. And it, it was stemming more so from, from, from me and listening to some of my counterparts. And I'm not saying that, you know, people don't have other reasons, but the trust factor. And just listening to that, to the back and forth and the timelines. I think for me, I can only speak for me, um, when we approved, when we fought for eighteen and nineteen um, to get the funding, it was with the notion that it was going to go up, that Amber Mill would have been nineteen's choice. Like let's be honest. Like that was known. It wasn't something that was secretive. So for us to that say that not, you know, Amber Mill was never an option and we're not really being truthful. Um, because the mere fact that we allowed superintendent to be in our closed session told you our intention. Now, it was on us to not maybe verbalize that in our voting process when we said, okay, here's eighteen and nineteen. As Susan said, we should have said, we wanted it Amber Mill. But we didn't. And I'm glad we did it because even if I would prefer to go there because it's proper land, at the end of the day, and I've said this multiple times as it relates to the school board, you guys are a fully autonomous body and it's highly inappropriate. And I apologize for even saying that last meeting through Supervisor Gary, that I would not support Brookpoint. It is highly inappropriate for me to question your judgment as it relates to school because our, our citizens empowered you to make those decisions. The only thing they empowered me to do as it relates to you is to fund you and basically sign off. Um, if, if you believe that Brookpoint is the best choice, then you will have to answer to your bosses when that time comes. And trust me, more than anything else, people will show up when it comes to school. Then you'll find out if you made the right decision. What, what I won't do is delay school capacity any longer because I realized afterwards, when I was driving my kid to school uh, on Telegraph and we toured the end of last month in our board, we were talking about funding um, major CIP road constructions for the county and what takes precedent. And Supervisor English and I had said, we need to think about our roads that directly impact our schools. And looking at this paper today and then back when we had that last meeting and I thought about it. And I was like, wait, I don't need any more buses and cars coming to Wide Water. No offense, because we need to redistrict. Telegraph is already in terrible condition as it is. And we don't have the money right now to widen Telegraph to make it a safe space. So the mere fact to think of more kids having to redistrict across ninety-five to come to Wide Water because of capacity issues in the central and southern parts, that scares me because recently when, when it was icy outside, I live off Telegraph, I'm directly off Telegraph. It was not pretty and there's a lot of bends and turns. So if I'm going to be waving, you know, the champion's flag for transportation and road safety and respecting your decision, then even if to a degree I don't understand it, I have to respect your decision in approving Brookpoint because at the end of the day, that was what you were empowered to do. I will say the issue on my part, like I said, happened because it was a breakdown in communication and transparency. Like I felt like you guys could have told us and say, hey, listen, we are cutting it close to try to deliver two schools on time at the date that we want to save money. And we can't, we don't know for sure yet if Amber Mill's in the bank. Like we can't wait for that timeline. However, in the meantime, we're thinking about going to Brookpoint. I think if that conversation was out there, the limit that you guys knew, then a lot of, some of the reaction from some board members would have been a lot different. And so I think the learning lesson from this is better communication, period. And just be honest. And then also respecting each other's boundaries, like, I'm not elected to do your job. You're not elected to do my job. And if no one agrees with your decision, you'll find out.
Thank you.
I'm not going to beat the same horse that she was beating, but I think we, that's the reason we had a three-on-three is to try to communicate to one another. And again, I feel if, if I was Monica's district and y'all did that to me, I would be upset too. Well, she's taking it on stride of what she did. But I think you should have, you as a school board, you should have come to us and say, look, we're thinking about this. This is, and get our opinion and, and also I think you didn't give community. I personally don't think you got community input. How can you give community input when you have one meeting a month? I don't understand that. This is some big decisions that you have to make. You're meeting once a month and this is not getting out to the general public. I have concerns about that. I agree, y'all made the decision, you're going to have to answer for it. That, that's on you, but I still think we didn't get enough community input about where these schools will be. And I know, I, I, what I fear, uh, and he can probably vouch that, that we're going to have another high school issue with, with the traffic. I think it's going to be another, we've got major issues down there with traffic anymore. Everybody knows that and nowhere to go. Fortunately, there's two ways here and you can't stop it. We don't have a main highway, I know Route, um, six thirty, like we do Route one. That's another concern that I have. But I think it should have been brought up in three-on-three to say, this is what we're thinking. This is where we're going. And I think, again, the lack of communication should go back again.
Ms. Scott?
Yeah, I, I just, I think there's a misunderstanding as well and maybe it's on my part. But as a board member, I could swear I read something in the code. I am not allowed to speak about property or where schools are going to go until there's a vote. I can't break that.
You can say you're thinking, y'all are thinking about this.
I am not allowed to say that. And I'm not going to say it until, until someone tells me that I'm allowed to. And so, yeah, I'll talk to my, to our lawyer, but I was told that until there was a vote, I'm not supposed to speak on where we might put property. Um, I remember Monica called me and, and talked about it. And I was like, well, I, I like listening to what you said, but I can't talk to you about this.
I was trying to get to you, but don't make it too deep.
So, um, but I, that could be my mistake. I'm just one person, so I'm not apologizing for the board. Um, I will find out if, if that's, you know, the case. Because, um, and then we've had a former school board member saying, we could have talked to her, but I don't, I thought we weren't allowed to talk to the other board until we've had a vote. But I could be wrong.
Well, in my, in my essential clarification, I don't ever want you to violate your procedural rules, right? That's terrible. So I didn't mean it that way. I meant that once you guys realized timeline-wise that you were hitting a crunch, then your staff could have been like, we have not introduced new possibilities. That doesn't mean that a vote is taken, but at least now when we get the lead, we could have said, oh, Brookpoint is on there now. I wonder why, and let's wait and see what you decide. So there's, there's workaround, you know, that, that piece. But that's the piece where I'm saying for me that we could have done the updated CIP showing the new potential sites you're looking at versus, you know, the vote happened and then Brookpoint, you're like, wait, what? Like I had no clue.
But you can't put potential sites that were the,
Because they'll be already owned, Brookpoint.
They're already owned, Brookpoint, so you could have, yeah.
There's no negotiating position.
Well, I understand that, I'm just trying to say.
Wait, you own Cliff Farm and you had Cliff Farm in here.
May I make it comment?
Yeah.
I love.
Dr. Warner, did you have something, please?
You had your hand up.
Okay. I have my hand up down here.
I'm sorry, you have to like wave. I'm short, I'm sorry. I, I was after whoever was up there.
I did miss that.
Who's next?
Dr. Warner, go ahead.
Okay, good. I'm just, I just want to say, we had two failed votes on the Amber Mill site. I, there were four board members that aren't going to move on that. We need seats. I went with the least objectionable option and to try to maintain and preserve the timeline, which is also about fiscal responsibility because the longer we delay, the more the school costs. And we need the seats. We need the seats on the quiet side. We need the seats on Garrisonville's side. The Garrisonville District is the heart of Stafford. It touches every single district with the exception of George Washington. So the fact that students go back and forth across those boundaries is natural. It doesn't make any sense to, 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 to sit there and say, oh wow, you know, we want our students to all be, because they don't. And I will just tell you, I have had more complaints about capacity from my constituents whose students also attend Brookpoint High School. Although I have had people call me an idiot for, you know, the Brookpoint site. But I've also said, we need the capacity and they've agreed. At this point, I don't want to lose this school because I think the seats are very important. Do I think it's the best site? No, we don't. I'm perfectly honest with you. I think the Amber Mill site was a better site. I think that because of all those reasons, because of where the Garrisonville District is located, because of the fact that they have three thousand people per square mile where everybody else hails, if the construction of Falmouth has about a thousand. It makes sense. All the, and we certainly have the roads and the infrastructure. It would just tell you, living on the east side of one and I ninety-five, I had to drive all the way to one and I have to turn left or right. There isn't the road, there aren't the roads. And a lot of the roads that do exist on that side aren't as well maintained. They just aren't. So for all those reasons, I agree with you, but that vote wasn't happening and I, we need the seats. And that's how I made the decision. Um, I invited this guy and, and this, um, Gary to the site and we looked at, we looked at the Brookpoint site. It has its, its drawbacks, but it also has its advantages. Because it does, we already have a lot of infrastructure there. So that means a lot of the off-site work that we would normally take for and a lot of the immediate costs are not going to be, are not going to be occurred.
Dr. Shes?
Yeah. So first, um, next chairwoman, Guy, I just want to say, I was at a middle school today and the middle school students behaved really, really well. And so your comment about middle school students was perhaps not appropriate.
Exasperational.
Exasperational.
Well, those were like special business.
I'm just asking. We're also supposed to be a special publisher.
Yeah. So I, I did want to get, Yeah, so I, I did wanna get, um. I was. So, um, yeah, that's what I was saying. So I wanted some, a little bit of clarity on this first slide where it says Embry Mill and Germana properties were both considered but ultimately not available for twenty-two six Brookpoint.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, can you illuminate that? Because I voted twice for the Embry Mill site, and I was never told that there was a dispute with the developer.
So, um, so.
Dispute with the developer, like where did you get that from?
So, just a couple of tidbits that, that we wanna share. Obviously, the Germana site too, they, they had some leadership changes, um, in the, in the spring and in the summer that impacted the potential for negotiation and our ability to sit down and have a conversation about what property may or may not even be available. Um, with the Embry Mill site as well, um, it was our understanding from the county administration that there was some conversations being had, uh, with the developer at Embry Mill in terms of what would.
Did that share with our entire board before that, those two votes?
No, and there was, and in fairness, there, there, there was, there was no conflict, there was no conflict about Embry Mill at the time that we were originally looking at Embry Mill as a potential site. Um, the timeline that we were operating under was very tight. Um, the board supervisors endorsed its capital improvement plan and authorized the go-ahead for eighteen and nineteen, the eighteen site had been selected, the nineteen site had not been selected, so the timeline to move quickly on that was running out in order for us to be able to identify.
Yeah, so that's another, I just, I'm just trying to get clarification in case anybody is sitting here and thinks that, oh, the reason the school board wouldn't vote for Embry Mill was because this is, you, you get the vote.
Yeah, and that is not, not the reason.
Okay, there was a decision of the board not to go with it.
At those two times, there were, there were two opportunities that the board reviewed that the site took votes, didn't go with it, and, and then later in the summer, there was some conflict that has since been resolved as far as we understand, um, since then, but it, it was in the summertime, and then, and then that was when we were looking at other alternatives, and the direction that we received from the time, that, uh, from our board was to look at sites potentially used at ninety-five, and we did.
So I also just, you know, I understand how our board got to where it went and all of that kind of thing, but I do wanna say, staff in April was telling us, if we don't get, if we don't vote on the Embry Mill site, our timeline is gonna get trashed, and it is going to cost more money. And they told us that repeatedly, and some of us heard it, and some of us did not hear it.
Is that in the closed session?
No, it was.
It wasn't, I remember.
It's in a closed session.
Excuse me, we couldn't hear that. Can you repeat what the last?
Yeah, so was it, what turned up?
No, it was open.
It was open. And, um, and in fact, I can remember looking at Mr. Towery and saying, are you gonna be able to open this school in twenty-twenty-seven if, if we delay further? And he said, well, it's certainly gonna cost more money. So I just, I just don't want us to be completely hypocritical here about how much we're concerned about what we're spending when we made a decision in April to not go with the Embry Mill site.
And we spent six months.
That offended you. Okay, I also wanna say, I find, um, let's see. I'm looking for the slide that has the expenditure, how much we're spending on, uh, timelines for, yeah, I'm looking for the, the breakdown of costs that we already spent. It's on the, um, there's a grid on the page. Oh, there we go, yeah, there we go, okay. So, you know, what's been left off of this slide is, at some point, Brookpoint will have to be replaced.
Not before north.
Not before north.
But that's, that's a matter of.
If I can't find an elementary school site, given the amount of trouble I've had trying to find an elementary school site, how am I gonna find a middle school site, I mean, a high school site, and what is it gonna cost me? Because once I put that elementary school on the Brookpoint site, I have to find a new high school site, and so in this calculation, it's not the cost to buy a new high school site, right? So I just, I just found this slide a little disingenuous in terms of the amount of money it's delaying construction, but I'm absolutely good with our board making whatever board decision we make, um, I just wanna make sure that we keep all of our budgets in mind.
Mr. Towery, can I just speak about that? Because I, I remember the conversation a little differently about a rebuild of Brookpoint High School on the Brookpoint High School site, which I said is after.
If I could just also say, I think the argument we made for every single one of our high schools and the lack of land that's in this county and the ability to access that land, that argument is true for every high school in this county, or every one of our schools at this moment that needs to be rebuilt. We have no land for school. We continue to build housing, we continue to bring people, I don't know how we do it either moving forward, we definitely don't have land available. We're at a high school, given the sizes that they need to be, so just to single out Brookpoint is not a great argument.
One of the things that we talked about was especially given the improved but not built, uh, communities, is that it may indicate the expansion of the urban services area by the time we need to rebuild our, another high school, um, and that brings us the opportunity for more land, just like we have now with Westlake, I have a Westgate, so I always interchange their names.
But I, I wanted to get to those. But we do would have, who would not have paid for it? When, when we made that decision in April, it meant we were setting our staff up to have to be behind the April, and what I see is lots of scrambling, and lots of scramble, and I see things that I feel like we're not getting the opportunity to really look at stuff. So for example, I was not really aware that this school was gonna be a hundred and whatever, thousand square feet, um, and how much larger that is, and I have been told several times by Ms. Healy that part of the reason we couldn't rebuild Berry Farm was because Maltre was so expensive.
I heard it a few times, yes, so. I didn't vote for mine, you're hoping it's so expensive.
I'm the only one that hasn't spoken.
That's why I skipped you.
I've just been.
Other hands.
And, and it's interesting to me because we're talking about boards working together, we're talking about transparency, we're talking about trust and all of these things, but Dr. Chase just spoke, and what she's saying is flying in the face of everything that we heard. It makes absolutely no sense to me. Yes, you all get to pick where the school's gonna go, but you all can't even get it straight on your own board. And then the other issue, which Dr. Young kinda glossed over, but I'm just gonna put it out there, you've heard the rumors, the decision on where this elementary school is going, what people in the community are saying is it's based off of racial issues, and I know that, uh, Ms. Holstead was gonna kinda speak to that, but we're hearing that, and it makes it more confusing and more issue. I, like everyone in here, I wanna work with everybody, but this is absolutely crazy. I'm sitting here listening to this, and I'm more confused having sat in here today than I was the last meeting that we had, so.
But the vote isn't a seven oh or six one.
It doesn't have to be.
So what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, it wasn't.
Hold on, I'm not finished. It doesn't have to be. What I'm saying is, is little things, like when I asked about, we were talking about the buses, and Ms. Sigmas said, the bus routes are gonna be longer if we put it on the Embry Mill side, well, then Dr. Chase said that that's not true, that's not, those are the things that I'm talking about, whether it's four, three, whatever the votes are, it doesn't have to be.
Because my kid, my kid goes to Hanson Oaks, and if my kid go, and I have kids go to Brookpoint, so the bus route to Brookpoint is longer than Hanson Oaks, she wouldn't know that because she don't live in Acquah Harbor.
And that's fine, but that's, but what I'm saying is, I'm sitting here and I'm listening to this, and she's saying staff fault to you, if you didn't make the decision about Embry Mill, that it was gonna put you in a, in a, in a bad situation, right? So you made the decision, we're sitting here, we're talking about timelines, and we wanna get the school built in twenty-twenty-six, and if we delay it, it's gonna be eight million, and we're gonna, the costs are gonna go up in, in twenty-twenty-seven, but you all put yourselves in this situation, putting it at Brookpoint High School versus Embry Mill.
My memory of the conversation.
So if I misunderstood you, Dr. Chase.
You did not.
I apologize, but I'm just, that's why I listen and I don't say anything, it just doesn't make sense.
So I will tell you that the conversation I remember is that we have to make a decision by whatever the cutoff date was, and I'm not gonna pretend to remember what that cutoff date actually was, otherwise, we'll be rolling over to the next year, whether that meant Embry Mill, whether it meant a Germana property, whether it meant purchasing land, one of these twenty, we would have to make the decision, and we, we were basically deadlocked. We couldn't get four votes for anything, but we got four votes against the Embry Mill site, which.
Including yours.
You know, I, I'm really glad that our staff provided these cover sheets, because what this does is it tells you about how many children at each grade level, elementary, middle, high, live in your district, and where those children go to school. Now, when I go to the Garrisonville page, I see that I have twenty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-six elementary children living in my district, and then when I do the math on the schools, I have three thousand one hundred and thirty-nine elementary school seats in our district. Seems like I've got plenty of room, right? But the two thousand three hundred kids we have go to seven different elementary schools, and that is because there are districts like Acquah, where you have almost two thousand elementary school students and only six hundred and fifty seats. So what happens in that situation? Those children are dominoed through our school system. So in this case, Stafford L, Anthony Burns was actually built to be an overflow school for, for Stafford L, so when the children were pushed out of Stafford Elementary, they were put into Anthony Burns, and two years ago, children were pushed out of Anthony Burns into Wayne. That's even further. So when you talk about pushing kids out, what we, what they are doing is they're looking for efficiencies. So they go into neighborhoods where they can send a bus and fill it in one or two parking spaces, and then they fill that bus with kids from those neighborhoods and bus them further, because it's more efficient than driving out on the rural roads and making twenty stops to pick up twenty kids. That's not fair, not at all. So what we can do is put schools where children are and try to make their lives a little more efficient.
Well, I'll just say this, and thank you for, for that, uh, listen, at the end of the day, I wanna do what's in the best interest of our kids. Put ego aside and mistrust and all of this stuff, you know, I spend a lot of time in the schools, and I see the overcrowded issues, and, you know, I, I never wanna be a part of something that's gonna delay the kids and our staff from getting what they need. I just want it to make sense, and I, and I just wanna understand, it's, it's like, you know.
And not wrestling, because we know, you've been on the job like four, five weeks.
You know, that's just where my heart is, and I wanna be clear on that, it's just very confusing sitting here, I think we're, we're going one way, we had a wonderful meeting, and I'm like, okay, I got it, and then there's more information that comes in from all these different sides, and I'm like, hold on, this is confusing, crazy, and I guess it's politics, right?
Don't get into a party, don't you mind your money? Let me just, let me just, let me just speak to it for a minute. What you have heard here on this board is what you see on paper here, the reasons for the four-three motion, the reasons for the set, or the six-one motion, right? But Dr. Chase was certainly entitled to her feelings and her opinions and her breakdown of the information, just as much as everyone else on this board is. So what you're seeing then, I mean, Dr. Warner specifically told you what her feelings were on it and how she felt about the situation, but, but we all have to look at this from a different lens than the one that's convenient, and I will go back to the Hartwood replacement. My heart was one hundred percent on that Hartwood replacement, one hundred percent, because that building has got to go, but I was presented with the absolute crushing need for capacity and the need for elementary school eighteen, and so I did have to take a look at all of the information that I knew, that I wanted to believe, that I had to believe, that I had proof of, but then I also had to take a step up out of that and take a look at the other side of it. The Hartwood replacement was only gonna give me four hundred seats, a new school's gonna give me nine hundred. Now, we can talk program design, capacity design, and every other thing at the school, but the fact is, is that our staff, who by the way, definitely present us with the information that we always consider, sometimes we jump on it, sometimes we have more discussions and things change, that is the nature of negotiation and discussion, that is what this board should be doing. But at the end of the day, when you stop to look at each, each one of these pieces of the pie, if I had to have a line of yeses on every single solitary decision to make that decision, this county wouldn't go anywhere. The Hartwood representative, I fought to keep my elementary schools on the Hartwood side, my kids on the Hartwood side, and off of these roadways as much as possible, particularly the elementary school. If Acquah Harbor had land immediately available and I could get nineteen in there tomorrow or at the same timeline, I would have voted yes all day on that one, so that, I would know that those Acquah Harbor kids went on those buses over up to or over an hour every day, because every minute they're on that bus, there is a potential for something bad to go wrong, and for me, that's what keeps me up at night. I don't know who we're gonna put in nineteen, or where that's gonna go, or how that district. Maybe the Acquah Harbor kids stay in Anthony Burns and we move some of these kids over here, I don't know what that looks like yet, because we don't have the building physically there, but the discussions are evolutionary, and the fact of the matter is, is that one, two, three times, we voted on elementary school, on, on elementary school nineteen, the four votes in here were designed, for, for no, were very specifically designed on information. Some of the, some of the information is what Ms. Sigmas is giving you right now with the numbers and the stuff, some of it is looking forward to the future, five years from now, you know, how do we decompress some of the pressure on Garrisonville, because it's sinking just as Hartwood will be in the future with Westlake, right? Like, we have to start to, to, again, I hate to use the analogy, but unknot this pretzel and start making things be a little bit more, more reasonably approached. I do not believe this board should be bound by poor, improper planning from the past, and that moving forward, this board has done what it was elected to do, which is to objectively and analytically look at the information that was presented to it and make a decision based on that, and if we had lost to Embry Mill, okay, we all weighed in and had our thoughts and feelings, but that's not the way the vote turned out. So for me, I'm happy all day long, look, I got into this for this picture and this, I'll answer any question that you have all day long, but the decisions were made, we had dissenting opinions, the dissenting opinions were voiced, they were noted, but I'm gonna say right now, the fact, and I don't know who starts these rumors, but the fact that that's even a discussion when it comes time to the kids in our schools, and the impact that Stafford County schools can have on those children is crushing to me, it is crushing, and anyone that allows that rumor to continue should really go and have a come to Jesus moment about it, because it is absolutely what's preventing us all from being kinder and gentler to each other.
I have to say too, with the whole Embry Mill thing, I mean, we have to think, we don't know who's gonna go in nineteen, whether it was in Brookpoint or whether it's in Embry Mill, we can't, just because a school is in a neighborhood, doesn't mean the neighborhood goes to that school, we've seen it play out in our redistrictings, so again, there's, there's this whole, we don't know, until that's there, and then Amazing Ryan does his work for us.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, um, I just have one last question, um, on, at, at the, the October meeting when we had regular work sessions, um, this bus parking lot that was added to elementary school eighteen. I'm trying to understand when that all came about, because it ended up being seven million dollars, and I didn't see it anywhere in any of your minutes that I read.
Right, we took it back out, it was a recommendation from staff, and we took it back out because of the expense, it is, and that's why it's now on our CIP instead of.
It's a separate CIP.
Well, a separate, uh, yeah, like.
But I'm not following you, so it is in the CIP or it's not?
It's in.
In the CIP, but as a separate project, it is not part of.
As a separate project.
But it's not part of eighteen?
Not at all.
Okay, so it's been removed.
It has.
But, but if I look at your CIP list, I don't see it in there.
The new one, the new one. It's bus parking, it's not necessarily tied to that particular site anymore, it was recommended.
Oh, it's called something else.
Because it was recommended by staff, because we were already gonna be turning dirt and paving, that it might be a nice project to consolidate, um, given that we have the space and the mess, uh, but because of the expense, this board chose to withdraw that from the plan, add it back to the CIP as its own standalone project. Uh, but because of the expense, this board chose to withdraw that from the plan, add it back to the CIP as its own standalone project.
It's number two on our CIP list.
It's called Stafford's class of bus.
Oh, it's considered. So it's been renamed.
Yeah, yeah. All right. It's no longer tied to any one particular location.
All right, thank you.
I do want to add to Mr. Diggs's comments. Any, one of the reasons that many of us get our vote to the Brookpoint site is, first of all, we own the land. So we aren't paying for it. Doesn't mean that we won't pay for any Brookpoint site. But it kind of helped us preserve the timeline because the delays for elementary school 19 are going to push in, delay Drew, Drew Middle School rebuild, Rising Star rebuild, and Hartwood rebuild. So that's where many of us. Yeah, so that was where, that's where some of us. And where are dissenting?
But the, the Embry Mill site, the number one site I call it, was a proffered site. So you don't have to pay.
Yeah, and I agree with you a hundred percent. Absolutely.
Okay, so true.
And that was the. But there are other costs associated with both and time factors associated with both. So both are also impacted into the decision.
My, my thing is not whether you put it at Brookpoint or wherever, but it's just the.
It appears to be transparent.
Yeah, the process of getting.
I agree with that.
Just, it seems like information, the information that's given, the sums are given to all, or it just doesn't flow.
It doesn't, the communication broke down between our board and yours.
There we go.
Um, actually, I wanted to comment on something that someone said that was a perfect segue. Um, Paul is actually not here. I didn't know he had a meeting. Um, but what, what this process, um, has really, um, highlighted, um, besides dysfunction is, um, the lack of, the lack of land, right? Like, I mean, I know when Liza and I got on the board, we both kept harping. I'm not saying no one else. I only speak for myself and my counterpart. We kept harping on land banking and land preservation. And my colleagues can tell you, anytime I hear land, I don't even care if it's one acre. I said, nope, it's ours. And that's my mindset. But I think one of the issues and I think the reason why this 19 became so contentious besides other, you know, no use that we're going to talk about, um, is the fact that land is an issue. And I think going forward, as we're dealing with this growth, um, and, and managing our schools, I think when we're having communications, I think the school board in general, and, and it's not my place to tell you exactly what to do as a recommendation and as a person who has kids at school now, in Stafford County, is we also need to rethink what, um, our designs may look like. Um, and when I say that, I don't think we can no longer, and I think it was Dr. Chase actually, who, who commented about rebuilding Brookpoint. I think going forward, we can no longer look at our schools as being replicas of their predecessors, even though Dr. Taylor mentioned about keeping the same, um, design prototype to save money. That's great. However, with 256 square miles and with half of it sometimes not in the urban services area that's left, we're going to have to think about being more creative in our construction and being creative with our sites. And so going forward, because I want to be solution oriented in terms of figuring out the next step forward, because we have a bunch of schools left in the list to figure out. So that we're not here arguing about sites and there's a site to look for a school because we want this amount of acres. And we're going to talk about being uncomfortable. Well, then going forward, some of our sites will make our constituents uncomfortable because you're not going to get a like-for-like replica of your middle schools, of your high schools, or your elementary schools. And I think when you guys are making that decision, I think you need to keep that in mind. Because if you're asking us to be uncomfortable with Brookpoint, then I expect this uncomfortability with your other sites. That may mean a middle school being on 10 acres and being creative, or a high school being on 15 acres. I don't know, but this conversation probably, and I don't think we, we paid attention to it, but it really highlighted that a problem with this arc, with our issue was land. Because we don't have ready available land. We don't have land that meets all of our needs. Like, this is a staffer 20 years ago where you had also available land. Um, so keep that in mind as, as we're thinking about designing and, and site selection, um, so that we're not arguing about, well, where did this come from? And meeting timelines because, because it is a main factor timeline. So.
Um, one, just one second, but, so I was reading over past minutes to kind of get the history on, on, you know, stuff. And I noticed that past three-on-threes have gone into closed session to discuss land. Um, years ago, before, probably not before Ms. Hilly was on the board. Um, but previously, and then of course they come out and nothing's reflected in the minutes. But if that is something that's amenable to both boards and future three-on-threes or seven-on-sevenths, that's something that we can certainly discuss on our side of the street as well. I haven't seen that in probably eight years, um, that happened. And I don't know if it stopped for a reason or it just stopped because it stopped. Um, I also wanted to, um, we kind of glossed over, before I forget, we talked about J-LAC getting together to discuss sites, but was it like, and I get that they raided sites, but was their conversation there as far as acquiring sites? Or did they move, did they? I mean, maybe they did, and I don't know.
So everybody in this room should be very proud of the fact that, that J-LAC exists and that you had a joint committee working between county and school staff, working well. But look at property that's available in the county for acquisition, assessing that property, and if anything, was the model of good government in trying to work together. Um, I give a lot of praise to, to Mr. Vosberg and his team, um, and how well that group really did work together. And in terms of, um, purchasing land, it is access to dollars. So, um, you know, we do need to identify a revenue source so that when there is attractive land, that there can be a recommendation to the supervisors and then a, and then a purchase to go along with it. Um, so that you can start banking land if you wanted to establish a policy and a mechanism to do that. Uh, it could save you money in the long run, uh, certainly. And certainly at a premium, you have some general ideas of where there's going to be advanced residential development and the need for schools and other infrastructure, fire stations, uh, police, et cetera. But, uh, but, but from our perspective, there's nothing but praise for, for how that group worked and fulfilling the intent of what that group was trying to do and taking that, that role and function very seriously.
Ms. Chair.
I'll just. Oh, there you go. Sorry.
May I have this? Yeah, thank you very much. Um, in this, by the way, good job. There's been a lot going on, so running this feature has been difficult. Um, I, I just want to address this since it's something that did come up is regarding the rumor and potentially issues with racism. Um, I, I think it's really important not to gloss over that. If that is a factor, and I don't know, and I'm not pointing at anyone, but if there was a factor for anyone, I, I'm praying that that would be made apparent to people and I'm praying that it doesn't exist. Is that fair? Um, that's not acceptable. I hope that we're not dealing with anything like that. And if we are, I hope people find out. Um, and that's not targeted towards anyone. But I think it's very important to, to stay at eye. Um, in the meantime, we have overcrowding. We have limited resources. The, the ceiling that this board goes to for our budget is going to dictate what we're able to give to the schools. We all know that. And we're competing for resources for, between districts and general government and many different things that you guys already know. Um, so, you know, I think while we're trying to do the best that we can for that, I, I would like to see more vision out of our board, out of our Board of Supervisors. I think we have had a lack of vision and, but kudos to Supervisor Alan here because she's getting to be, uh, getting to know many things we don't listen to and trying to listen more, um, especially regarding the, the comments to the land. Um, but we keep looking back and, um, playing this gotcha game with the school board and, um, and lecturing. And we cannot do business like that. This is a business. We don't invest. It's going to fail. And I have people who are traditionally against the taxes increasing coming up to me in the gym. While I'm trying to work out, and I won't mine because it's my job and I'll talk about it, saying they want their taxes to go up to pay for education. This is a big deal for the parents. And even people who don't have children in the schools in our county. Um, so I, I just think it's really important to make that point. We need to be creating solutions instead of, instead of saying, you did this wrong, you did that wrong. You know, the gotcha game with going through all the different points of where I disagree with you. We disagree. I don't like everything you do. I don't like how this can about my weird popcorn. You're killing me right now. Um, at least it's entertaining. Um, so my, I had a question. The five to eight million dollars, if that happened, that's coming out of something else, right? We're, we're taking resources from the next thing. And what would that be? We talked about the domino effect. Um, what's the first thing that comes to mind? Where that's going to come from? I, I would like to know.
Well, you, you have a lot of tools at your disposal. And to Dr. Chase's point, um, there's the immediate five to eight million dollars. And then there's the long-term considerations as well. Uh, anytime you build a school, it's a 60 to 70-year commitment. Uh, it's a 60 to 70-year commitment of maintenance. It's a 60 to 70-year commitment on placement. It's not a 60 to 70-year commitment on attendance zones, as we all know too well in Stafford. But, uh, but, but thinking about it from the short-term costs, for sure. You have operating expense and you have debt service. That's a part of your capital plan. And those are really the two tools that you have at your disposal. And that's really for the county administration to make a recommendation as to, to where that threshold is in terms of what your debt capacity is and what you can carry or, or what you have to expense as part of your operating budget, which is thin margins. It's very thin margins.
And, and what projects comes to mind if this has got affected? We started all the rebuilds.
Yeah, so you're looking at rebuilds as, as the next items that are on your. Yes, correct. And, and anything else that you have in your queue for, um, for potential projects? So you have a lot of analysis.
Thank you. So, um, I, I don't know if this bears much weight, but I think that it should. I am the district supervisor for where we're discussing this location. Uh, previously against it, and we had all of that conversation, but I'm trying to do the right thing right now with what we have. Because looking backwards doesn't help me move forwards and, and do the right thing. It just doesn't. It, it's never worked out in my. Um, it doesn't make sense fiscally for me to move this. Um, it doesn't make sense to continue to try and criticize decisions I may not have agreed with. But I am the district supervisor and my children attend all of these schools. And one of my children is in a freaking trailer. I don't know that this could make, like, if you needed a testimony from someone to say that it makes sense beyond not wasting another five to eight million dollars. I don't know what else to say. That's, anyway, that's all I've got.
I'll have Ms. Guy and then Dr. Young.
You know what? I'll let Dr. Young go.
Thank you. I, I agree with you. I agree with you. And when we talk about rumors, they may have been rumors. But when somebody sits in a town hall and talks about those kids and you're not aware what you're saying when you say that, it triggers some things in people from diverse backgrounds. You may not be aware, but it does. As a person that lives in this skin, that's been on the school board for four years, and I've been talking about Drew, that roaches are falling from the ceiling, and nobody gives a damn about not only the, the students because they're black and brown, but the teachers that have to go through that mold, roaches, and everything else. But we are concerned about going against staff recommendations where it's best to put a school because it's a win for Pam Young. Don't tell me that that was not one of the comments. I keep it in and I'm passionate. I fight for the school. I fight for supporting the teachers and the students because I care. I've been living in this district for 30-plus years. And Hartwood needed a school. Sewage, water problems. They got a new school, one coming right behind it. That's okay. Drew, all these years, still no school. We keep pushing that back and back and back, over and over again. And now we're concerned about getting eight million. I am concerned. But let's make sure, let's take today and say, politics aside, let's work for the students, for the teachers, for the school system. Put politics aside. That will be the lesson of the day. Let's stop it.
Pass your turn. It's back to you.
No, wait.
I think that the problem we have is, because this, this, oh. This is about politics. It should not be about politics. It should be about the kids. And I respect staff and I listen to the recommendations. I ask a lot of questions. But then I make my own decision on everything. And I'm sure you do the same. Because if our job was to accept staff recommendations, we wouldn't be needed. So we are here and we are accountable. We're accountable to our constituents. And we, as a board, make the best decisions that we can. Are they always right? Probably not. You know, nobody's perfect. But it's, it's the system that says the majority makes the decision. And in this case, the majority made the decision. And I don't understand why the Board of Supervisors is coming into the school's lane, as Dr. Chase will say, and trying to undo our decision, very second-guess our decision. I recall when the Board of Supervisors got involved in a land acquisition, and that was for farms. And look where that led us. How many years ago was that? Fifteen-plus years? We spent 4.7 million dollars of the taxpayers' money on flip farms. The intent was for school sites. But that was involvement by the Board of Supervisors in funding it. And for the record, I did vote against because I didn't think it was the best interest. But I wish you would just let us do our job. Let us support the kids. And as you all said, we're accountable. We're accountable to our constituents. We're accountable to the community. We need to work together. I mean, I appreciate this, Ms. Bunkie. I'm sure it took a lot of time. I don't know about you and your staff who put this here. But it shows, this, this shows the, the time and effort, the deliberation that went into it. And it shows it was not a easy decision. So I, I would just ask that you respect our role as a school board. And we certainly are going to, you know, respect yours as a board as well. Well, I want to make the, I'm, I'm just going to make the last comment. Um, I love this school division. My kids went through the school division. You can't hear.
Obviously because of the.
And, um, I have a lot of respect for everything that happens in the schools. Being a high school principal is probably the hardest job in the whole, whole school system. Yeah, it is true. Yeah. Um, I, the reason I put this sheet together, it really wasn't my intent at the beginning. I started doing some research and some reading over the weekend. And I'm like, okay, I'll jot that down. And then I went to a few other things and I jotted things down. And, and your board minutes are all very well collected in one spot. So it's actually very easy to pull things up and read it. And I started seeing some inconsistencies and I was looking back in my book. And I'm like, wow, this just doesn't make sense. And that is really what pushed this whole thing. So I am not here to say, gotcha. That is not the purpose. The purpose at the end of the day, and our Board of Supervisors has two things that we're responsible for. The budget, the tax rate, and higher, uh, two others, hiring our county administrator and our county attorney. We are responsible for setting the tax rate. And I remember when I was on the school board and my years on the Board of Supervisors, at the end of the day, we are responsible for the dollars of the people of this county. And when I built my, the office, I remember every time saying that. And in good conscience, as I started doing research, I'm like, huh, that doesn't seem right. That's not how we do things on our side of the street. Oh, that's interesting. They didn't take a vote on that. Well, that's, and I'll be honest, I had no idea that you had this many work sessions and that your close.
and that your closed sessions are always after your work sessions. I've heard people say they don't believe that you meet enough, and that you're not as transparent with the public, because you only have one public meeting a month. And I think if you look at that sheet, it definitely validates that your work sessions and your closed sessions all go hand-in-hand. Personally, I disagree with that, because I want a more transparent process. But that's who I am as an elected official. And I kept digging and just going, for me, it became, wow, I've got all this information here now, and it tells a story. And I felt that your board, me personally, should have voted on the capacity issues and discussed the additional 128,000 square feet of classroom. So if you guys wanna put this school at Brookpoint, more power to you. I think it's a huge mistake, and I wouldn't want it to happen at any of my constituents like that, when you have another elementary school site that was available. That is my humble opinion. I feel that every mill should have been the school. And then later, looked at the, the Germana site, which we are having a meeting with Janice Bulitzin coming up. So at the end of the day, I am responsible for the taxpayer dollars. Setting the tax rate and approving the budget. And when you increased those schools, you impacted everybody's budget. And I don't believe, in my opinion, that there was transparency to the public with that, especially when the document shows that your board did not vote on it. That, and also the size, as everything's reflected. So that's my opinion. I think we're really over our time.
I've already told Ms. Halsted, and she'll be it, and you can have one-on-one conversations. But I will say, any one of you, call any one of us. Opt out if you don't agree with that statement. But we don't have to have three-on-threes or seven-on-sevens. If you have a question, if anything doesn't smell right, if there's anything that just doesn't resonate, call any one of us, and we will happily...
Can I just, let them just take a minute just to, to help everybody understand the thought process? When I got onto this board, we were in the middle of this room district, anything, and trying to fix things. The only thing that anybody saw was a sheet that looked like this, and maps that looked like this. Now, everybody knows their individual districts, that's one thing, but there's not a single attributable factor to any kid in these maps, numbers, or notes. What it showed, it's just that the stacking takes on top of each other, and it has to end. That's where primarily the decisions come from. For the record, when I got on this board, Dr. Chase and her amazing, passionate pursuit for Drew, she had to make the tough decision to try and put, to try and put that away so that she could focus on the actual capacity needs. And I know that struck her really hard, but she did it for the betterment of the schools. As a result of multiple discussions about the state we're in, and to actually go down the route of Drew, and further discussions and down the road, we had decisions, Hartwood couldn't come before Drew, because Drew was more dire. So everyone makes decisions based on the actual facts that are in front of them. The need for... The fact of the matter is, is that chronically underfunding the school system year upon year over two years has led us to this. Just because we don't fund us to capacity doesn't mean our problems go away. As a matter of fact, chronically underfunding the school system makes our problems worse. That is why we sit where we are today. And so when I hear people say that the schools of the biggest suck on the system, it's literally the most ignorant thing I've ever heard in my whole life. Because at the end of the day, chronically underfunding our teachers, our building, our community, that is what should outrage the citizens and the residents of this county, and nothing else.
Madam Chair, one quick thing. I know we've been trying to wrap this up, or we've discussed the modular trailers, I know that was a...
Yeah.
I think that's important to get, at least the... Modular trailers.
There were two things we didn't get to, we could get to them in thirty seconds.
Oh, so just because there was questions about the Drew timeline, tight schedule, okay? So that's a, yeah, we've got about four years right now to get to where we need to be. We're gonna be using every single minute of that. But over the next six months, right, this whole discussion that we've had tonight, there's gonna be a lot of discussions and decision points going on about Drew, the size, and the location. So maybe this is a good opportunity for everybody to...
Solve, expedite this by saying that if you made a decision to move forward with Drew, the soonest that you could open Drew is 2028. That is the soonest that you could open Drew if you approved it now. So that's a long lead, and you've got a couple of years of light debt capacity on the front end, but that's just thinking ahead. So like, you know, we, we can see Drew as a pressing need, and we do see Drew as a pressing need, as the top priority of the school board on the unapproved items for advancement in CIP. But if we were to pull the trigger right now, the soonest the doors would open on a new Drew would be 2028, and you have some critical decision points. How big the school will be. We're transparently bringing this topic to your attention right now. Where that school will be. Those are two decision points that need to be decided very quickly in order for this project to move forward, even on this timeline, which is an aggressive time.
This timeline doesn't really have anything to do with money. If we won the lottery and had all the money in the world, this would still be the timeline, correct?
Correct.
I mean, how big is the school?
It would be, it would be much shorter conversations, but, but I just wanted to make it clear that the timeline is not... Money doesn't dictate this particular timeline. Even if we had the money sitting in the bank, this is our timeline.
Rising Star is pretty much tied to the Drew timeline for a number of reasons, but...
So I had a supervisor ask me why they are two separate appropriation requests. And that was separated because they were coming, we anticipate that the money will come from two separate sources. The ones that we have budgeted or asked for, for our elementary schools, come from our capital reserves. For elementary schools, or, I'm sorry, for early childhood, we would be asking for additional funding. We separated them so you could decide whether you approve them together or not, or all, or in part, rather than having to split them out and figure out the accounting on your own. We provided the accounting in two separate assets.
So, yeah, this is, this is a similar product or information that I've shared with the board of supervisors at your board meeting last week when I was there. Just looking at total classroom deficits across the board at our elementary schools, where our current modulators are, and then where the new ones are proposed. I had a request from the board of supervisors, so I just wanted to point those out specifically. A couple highlights is, even with our current modulators that we have, we still have a deficit of seventy classrooms. And that's why you see kids in hallways, kids in closets, you know, as small, small room space, breakout space. So, but even full-size classrooms, so think a K-5 classroom, we still have a deficit of roughly thirteen classrooms. So that's looking ahead next year with those projections. So significant need still, and that's why we're requesting additional elementary school classrooms. The other piece of it was eight classrooms at, for North Star and Rising Star, specifically at North Star. At the, uh, school, or board of supervisors had questions specifically about the number of classrooms that we have at each, at North Star and Rising Star. So I broke that out on the right, and what type of programs those are. So we have our, our Head Start, and there's a couple different Head Start programs, but they're consolidated there.
I didn't see growth, though, the growth, you didn't show me the growth. The projected growth, what's the...
Do you want to know the growth for the early childhood North Star?
Oh, sure.
If you're asking for equalization, just wanted to know what the growth was with having the three different programs, which is the Head Start, um, early childhood, and the Virginia, and that BPI, the school initiative, so...
Okay.
I do need the growth, because then, I know, um, supervisor, I mean, I'm a school member, Sigman, you've mentioned around, uh, Garrison, Garrisonville, holding... Is that you, or?
So how, how many kids were you removing to Garrisonville that you decided to move some?
Are we... So the, we would look at redoing our boundary lines, because right now, our boundary lines push all the way up, like every mill goes to Rising Star, doesn't even go to the northern end of the county. So our Rising Star zone is massive, because we only have two early childhood centers right now. And so, as I put on there, we have bus times that exceed ninety minutes because of how big those zones are. And we're not putting thirty kids on those buses, those are smaller buses, and that's just how long it takes to go all the way across the county, and because that Rising Star zone is so big. So by adding North Star, it gives us, or additional capacity in North Star, not only can we take that North Star boundary, make it a little bit bigger to pull more kids in, and they're closer to their, um, early childhood center, it actually allows us growth. So right now, we have no classrooms available. So, um, next year, we're projected to add roughly three classrooms, or five.
We need five to be compliant right now.
So, so compliance of the, um, special ed, correct?
Special education.
So that, that was what my concern was. If we're only focusing on our requirement and, and hold the rest, I just need to know how many actually, uh, modulators...
Five, well, six, all coming here.
Uh, relocatables that you need, and how much room you had at Garrison, um, Garrisonville Elementary School. So, so...
You don't have any room in here?
Rockhill, I'm sorry, why does, Rockhill, I'm sorry, so...
So we would need to purchase six, because they come in pairs, they're short five. So it would be a minimum six.
Just for early childhood, this is not even taken in consideration, BPI or Head Start?
No, that's just...
Well, the programs don't grow. There, we apply for them, so we have a set amount of Head Start and BPI. Okay, so those numbers don't grow. What's growing exponentially is our early childhood special ed.
Okay. And with the modulators, that would give us a little bit of breathing room, because the, um, addition to our North Star has actually been on our CFP program. So...
Probably since the day we opened North Star, there was...
I feel like they're all...
And right now, the attended zone, everything below six-ten goes to Rising Star. So...
And North Star's on six-ten, so both...
Yeah. So...
So Madam Chair, I just have one question. Again, more reading. In the December twelfth school board meeting regarding the modulators, and actually, all the charts and everything you've done have been very helpful. Where you had the relocatables, where you need more, um, your, your charts have been great. There is a mention in a paragraph about, um, the contingencies for the relocatables, and it indicates about $350,000. There's a best practice that you've mentioned, minimal unforeseen expenditures of the ten of $350,000. And then it says, this is not included in the numbers. You will notify the school board if additional funding is needed. Can you kind of help us?
Yes, sir. No, yes, I can answer that. So, um, the 4.5 million is to do the trailers, just as we have all of our prior thirty-four-plus trailers that we have right now. If we have, if the, um, goes back to the permitting discussion we had with the footers, if we have to do the concrete footers, um, as we were required to do last year, it'll be an additional $300,000 cost. So the ABS pads, which are approved by engineer, be safe, and that was approved by the appeals board. If we follow that process, we won't need the additional funds. But if we are denied and have to go back and do the concrete footers, then it will cost additional funds. And...
So you're considering the footers a contingency?
So we don't, we don't have any contingency built into these modulators budget, um, because we know all the costs, except the cost of...
That's what you indicated in your write-up, that's why I was confused and wanted to bring this up.
Yeah, there is zero dollars in contingency, the point was, is if we needed money, we were gonna have to come back to board and board of supervisors.
Right, okay. So if you do have to come up with that money, is that money that the school board is gonna pay for, or are you gonna be asking the board of supervisors for help on that?
We would come back to the supervisors, because we don't have revenue to support that.
Okay, that's what I need to know. Thank you.
I have one positive thing, I have a question. And yes, um, some of us have had discussions amongst ourselves about going down to Richmond's, and we really, really, really need money and green ticket signs. And I would love for us to just go down on the bus together and unite and maybe tell parents if y'all wanna show up, or whoever else. I would love for staff to maybe talk to each other about potentially doing that, because obviously, there's only so much we can even do with our taxes locally, and we're lobbying for a lot this year, so is that something that we could explore?
Thank you. So we'd like to get your word, reminding you of that idea.
So, so I guess then, as looking at the agenda item that will be on our, um, February sixth meeting, what I'm hearing you say is we're gonna need to add the $350,000 to that appropriation.
So not, not at this time?
He said no, because of the...
So you think any of that, they waive it? We won't need it.
Correct.
Okay.
Which is the decision, which is the decision the appeals board made last year, unfortunately, it was too late.
I know, it doesn't matter, okay, whatever, okay, got it.
But now we're gonna try to get ahead of the appeals process, so that...
We tried, we're trying.
How much would it cost to go through the appeals process?
Time?
Just time.
And time has construction costs.
Ms. Guy, you have one last question?
I do have a, um, a question for, um, Chairwoman Bumpkin. You know, Ms. Healy has, uh, was giving me some guidance about us doing leadership, and she was saying that a lot of the breakdowns, um, that, well, potentially, a lot of the breakdowns come from like a lack of communication, and it's just, sometimes it's hard for me to cue Monica in on everything, and then for her to get it, and then give it back to you guys, or whatever. But if we had a chair, vice chair meeting that was set, you know, her recommendation was that that would actually go a long way in fostering transparency. Questions that arise from your board, you guys could bring them to us, we could answer them then, and then you could take that information back. I'm just speaking for myself, I'm very open to whatever, um, type of meetings that you would do with Grant, and I think my, um, my chair would agree on that, so that the ball is in your court, but I'm very open to starting something like that, so that this type of stuff doesn't happen. I'm a straight shooter, I'm being honest with you, even if you don't like it, because I don't care. So I would love for you to be able to say, you know what? I can trust what Maya's telling me, even if I might be wrong, but I'm not intentionally wrong. So, um, I hope that we can do something like that.
So a couple years ago, when I was chair, we actually started that. Um, and we had chair, vice chair meetings, and we also, um, I remember, um, Ms. Sigman, when we started the three-on-three, I was on the school board, and it was my board supervisor colleague that I talked to all the time that said, golly, I just don't understand everything that's going on on the school board. And, and so we came up with this three-on-three idea. That's how that whole thing started back in 2010. Um, I will tell you, we did have some closed sessions, not very many with the three-on-three, but unfortunately, there were leaky buckets that came out of the closed session, and so we, um, we stopped it. You know, people don't have, know what confidentiality is, you know, on both sides of the street. You know, I'm not pointing a finger at the school board, trust me. So, and then that was kind of the end of that. But, um, it's definitely something that I can talk to, um, to Nisha about and to staff.
I would also recommend though, since there were so many questions about, you know, what we said and what we did, that, um, if these questions come up and the chair, vice chair doesn't work out, and it is three-on-three, I would definitely recommend, you know, if you see that we're doing something and you're questioning it, definitely put it on the three-on-three for them to discuss, so...
Well, I call Dr. Chase all the time, so we have a very easy working...
I talk to my person, too.
Well, that's, let's be a better example, Ms. Jen.
Anything else, I think, or is anything else...
The school board will take a brief recess, use the facilities, and...
For two hours, yeah, the board will take a brief recess to use the facilities. All right, remember that, let's get started. What can I? Have to sure. Palmer, get started.
This is now hard for me to learn. It's constantly these project assignments.
Yes. I shared some screenshots.
Okay, we have to have a call to order and then a roll call. What do you do then?
All right, I will call it back to order at seven fifteen three. Let's see if you want to call a roll.
Sure. Then Ms. Dr. Chase, right here. And Ms. Guy, here. Ms. Halsted.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Yeah.
Ms. Dedica.
She, I think she was, she was the other one.
She's probably, she's here.
Ms. Sigmund, here. And Dr. Ward, here. I'm sure you have a call.
Okay, let's should have put in.
All in favor, anybody opposed?
All in favor. All right.
Okay.
Revenue and non-discretionary items.
We're a bit.
Very dis. I'm voting for that.
I was going to turn that into my name call. Sorry.
Madam Chair, this evening, we have the Chris Palmer Show on revenue and non-discretionary.
My second favorite reality show.
So we'll quickly touch on revenue, which is not a whole lot to talk about yet. I don't know what's already been presented. And we're going to go over our non-discretionary, starting with adjustments to the base budget, what staffing adjustments we have in discretionary, some of the other comp benefits, and our departmental non-comp changes. So revenue forecast as presented in Dr. Taylor's budget, which is what we're presenting on today, going to be focusing on revenue and then our non-discretionary expenditures. So we have projected for twenty-three point eight million dollars in additional state aid. That's a combination of, you know, we saw, obviously, most of that is going to be because of our growth. So we're projecting other six hundred and nineteen students in addition to about a hundred and fifty that we added that we were above in twenty twenty-four. And then there was a slight adjustment in the composite index. There was a grade benchmarking year at the state. All of that has led to twenty-three point eight. I will say, from being on, hearing a lot of chatter from finance directors across the state and school divisions, a lot of people are dropping because they can see a few students drop. There wasn't a lot of full harmless in the governor's budget for some of the smaller school divisions. So because of growth, so I'm going to say we're fortunate that we have large additional state revenue. Unfortunately, it's because we have a lot of kids, which we have a lot of new needs because of those additional students that we're adding. Also programmed in is fifteen additional million dollars from the local county budget. That is from.
Do we have any way to stress trust the cap tool given in his last capital?
So.
Just to hold these questions until we get to this. I think we could. I'm not sure how my intentions stand.
I will say, coincidentally, it's a good point, Dr. Warner, because on Friday evening late, they released a new cap tool. And they said, oh, go check this. And also put a lot of disclaimers on it about, remember, this is just a planning tool. You can't rely on our cap tool until the general assembly's budget. So Carter and I both looked out for a few minutes thinking, and I told Thomas that it came out. And he's like, what the heck? Luckily, it was zero change for us.
I just wondered if there was anybody who's frustrated. Because I also know that the general assembly could change this.
Yes, correct. So the good news is, we think if the general assembly makes changes, that number's going to go up. And that lets us address some of the items in our budget that we had to take out.
And for frame of reference, because last budget night was like saved by Chris Palmer, what did they actually land on as the additional local funds for FY twenty-four by comparison to the fifteen million?
Um, it was, Carter can look it up for me maybe. It was about, it was actually about fifteen.
Fifteen point nine.
There you go. I knew it was fifteen. I wasn't sure of the point.
That's around what he was recommending. But then the budget presented would be much lower. But then Chris came in and saved it.
This is about a million less of an increase over last year's budget.
Okay. That's what I was really trying to get at.
It's a million less.
If we have.
Did the increase.
Yeah. From the county.
Did they ultimately end it up?
It's fifteen million more than last year.
It's fifteen million more than last year, but it's a smaller.
But it's a smaller increase. But it's fifteen million more than last year. It's not a million less than last year. No, it's a million less than just increase. Yeah, yeah.
But we have fewer students that added to our division last year, too, correct?
Correct.
We only added like four, and this year we're adding six. And we're asking a lot of smaller. Because of the state.
We had budgeted to add a little over three hundred, and we had over four hundred show up. So, you know, they're, you know, that's not necessarily the metric that the county uses in determining its funding, but it is a smaller number than what we're anticipating.
I'm just trying to think of what that increase, that increase is spread over.
Yeah, if it was proportional, we would be expecting a larger increase if it was proportional. But that's not the case.
And we're still trying to play catch up from several years of kind of level funding or very minimal increases. Ultimately, it comes to four hundred and fifty-three million dollars in total revenue in this budget. And that's what our expenditures need to match. So today, we're focusing in on adjustments to the base budget and then our new non-discretionary expenditure increases in the budget. This is a balanced budget. So we do add up to a total expenditure of four hundred and fifty-three million, just as we do on the revenue side. But we do list, kind of on the backside of our budget summary sheet, a lot of the items that started out in our budget that we had to take out. So those are the unfunded needs of roughly sixty-three million dollars.
And as state revenue adjusts upward, that's the list that we'll turn to to start.
That's like our menu, right?
Correct.
Out of parts.
So I didn't hand it out, but if y'all want, I do have the budget summaries. But I know it matches what you already received.
Yeah.
Um, not in the new package that I gave out today.
It was in the whole one, all right?
Yeah, it's in the pamphlet that you would have received. There's a couple copies.
You all got exhibits.
I already did. So but just like, in your pamphlet is the same summary that I provided you. But in case you don't have the pamphlet handy, I just went ahead and provided it. So adjustments to our base budget. So first to start, we had to make adjustments to catch up for the items that we added in FY twenty-four. So mid-year twenty-four, we got additional state revenue. The additional state revenue, a lot of it was only for a half-year's cost of the additional expenditure. But the state knew that they, come this year, they were going to provide the full year amount of like the, of the two percent salary raise that they did. So I don't want, what I don't want to be lost is, we have to catch up on some of those expenditures because when we approved them in twenty-four, we only had to approve a six-month cost because they were a mid-year add. But now we have to catch up for the other six million that would have been for the beginning of the year to start with the new base budget. But part of that twenty-three point eight million dollars in additional state revenue is the money to help us catch up with that salary increase that we did mid-year. Does that make sense?
I mean, no. Say again then, because it sounds like more than.
All right.
I got it.
All right.
I just let. Yes, yes. What he said was, last year, we got, we only had the expenses for half a year. So they gave us half a year's money. This year, we have to pay twice as much because it's a full year. But that twenty-three million that they're going to give us in additional state money includes the whole year.
Correct. The past year and.
Not for the things that aren't in ESSERQ.
Correct.
So for positions that aren't.
The only position is that's the money we have to come up with.
Yes, and that's why I said it's partial.
It's not the entire amount, but it covers a big proportion of it. Where, they don't break it out in their cap tool that we relied on it. And specifically, this was for last year. This is for next year. But we know that a big chunk of that is to, for the other half of last year's expenditures. We also have items that were funded out of ESSER funds last year. And then in exception of, we're also at one position that a Title IV funded that needs to roll into operating fund as well. So it's thirty-one point one FTEs. Actually, if you remember, we added social workers at the very, very onset of COVID and ESSER, going back three or four budgets ago with some federal funds. And what's. So those social workers were a fraction because of the way they were divvied up between the schools. So that's why we have like a point one there, just if anybody's curious. And then also, we have an adjustment, so stipends, that's like a true-up. So it's stipends that we're paying in twenty-three, we're paying in twenty-four. But we don't have enough budgeted to pay them. So we have, and this is really attributed to growth. So we have math teachers. As we expand and add more math teachers, we have more turnover in math teachers. We offer a recruitment incentive of signing bonuses for year one and two if we retain that math teacher.
Does that also include, when you say math teacher incentive, I recall when they were talking about provisionally licensed teachers. Is that math incentive often to, offered to fully licensed or also the provisionally licensed? Okay.
Yes, I think so. We also have a growth in our mentor teachers. So as we grow, we add more teachers, we add more first-year teachers, and we need to add more stipends for the mentor teachers that kind of take those new teachers under their wing for those first two years.
But we never went back and relooked at the stipends as a whole. We're just adjusting.
Correct, correct.
We have talked about looking at stipends as a whole for decades.
And, and we started.
If I do everything, it becomes a little.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, it, yes.
And. And so, yeah.
It's starting to really be seen by the notes you want to put that position on. And it's making the revenue go up with that. And it should, it should.
So just as a, as a context, I started in public education in the late nineties. And one of my very first jobs at a, at a college was to teach and to also coach. Our coaching stipends are the same as when I was coaching.
Oh, speak word.
Okay, so this is over twenty-five.
I saw mine too. That's like in January last year, and we threw it on the way.
So and, and, yeah, this fall, Carter and Gwen, some of our other budgets, that met, met with a lot of our school A.D.s, a lot of our kind of lead, our coordinators, to come up with, what are areas that we're falling short? What are the things that we need to offer? So we do, we have a pretty comprehensive list of things that we're not doing right now that we should be doing, but they're not funded right now. So in our five-year plan, we'll have a, hey, in year one, let's put five hundred thousand dollars to it just to start creating a better structure. And that structure would probably look like, and this actually, we used to have it this way, and we got away from it, is tying some of these stipends to the teacher scale. So that as the bottom of the teacher scale goes up a couple hundred dollars, it's a percentage of that, so maybe it goes up fifty bucks, you know? So it slowly, slowly goes up as well. So it might be fixing the structure of the stipends in year one. And then after that, we're adding stipends where we think they need to be added. But we're not to that point yet because it is several million dollars to try to fix and add all the stipends that were requested. Right now, this is just a true-up for the stipends that we're already offering, but we're not budgeting for adequately. All right, so first of all, staffing adjustments for growth and our non-discretionary growth. So we have six hundred and nineteen students budgeted as an increase over this, not September thirtieth, to the next September thirtieth. As Dr. Taylor was mentioning, we also have growth in our FY twenty-four year that wasn't budgeted for, and that's a hundred and fifty-four students. So in total, it's seven hundred and seventy-three kind of new students that were unaccounted for from last budget to this budget.
But we did make it through last year with the budget. And that's something, we got, we need to be prepared to address some of these issues. So even though they weren't budgeted for last year, we met the needs of the hundred and fifty-four with last year's budget. So we need to explain why we need the extra money and where it's going to go, not tonight.
Well, and I think we've got an easy solution. And so this is probably the most complicated portion of what we're going to share with you, is how structurally we want to include staffing for growth per the staffing standards, but then in, in the non-discretionary line. But then to show you in the discretionary line how we can peel some of that back to live to fight another day, and as new revenues become available, restore those things piece by piece. And, and Chris has got an example to show you what that looks like. So it seems a little weird from an accounting standpoint that you see it up top in your budget as a non-discretionary item, and then again, as a discretionary item, but as a peel-back discretionary item. Does that make any sense?
That's because the staffing standards are somewhat discretionary.
They, they are based on.
We adopt them, but we can always use to be, but not more formulate.
They are very formulaic now, so.
And that's kind of my, where my head was with as far as the seven seventy-three versus the six nineteen. Did we do it? Absolutely, we're required by law to do it. Did we do it the way we have essentially voted that we want to do it?
No.
No. And when we are able to forgive funding that, I'm not blaming anybody, but that didn't come with the students because it's not like they walk in the door and we get a check, we are leaving, essentially leaving money on the table that could go to literally anything else we need, whether it's site allocation or plumbing or whatever. I'm not about, I'm cutting corners of, you know, per people money. We should have had it, I think we should still get it.
Did you just make it this money for the hundred and fifty?
They did. But again, it's a portion of a portion. So it, it was limited. And, you know, I will say this, with the kids that show up after September thirty, you know, we're not going to add an extra first-grade classroom. We're, we're going to relive with what we've got. We may add extra sections in the second semester of a high school or a middle school. We may look at other ways that we can augment support for students after school or during the school day. But after September thirty, we're not structurally going to improve our system per se. We're kind of, we are kind of stuck with the class ratios that we have because to split classes and, you know, that just is a nightmare.
But are you checking how much it costs to buy an abandoned sign?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so, so that, that kind of explains a piece of that. Then we've got some support positions here.
Yeah, so for item number one, which is, which is growth, kind of think of our school-based positions. They're going, I'm going to get to them on the next slide, but just know that they are. There's an exhibit two in your handouts, which were attached to both boards in the items. We'll give you that detail if you want to go back and reference it, but I'm about to touch on that. The next two are, when we have growth, there's also, and we, we had teachers, we had students. We need support staff to help handle that and process all of that. So want to point out, in HR, we need to add a few positions. They're doing eighteen processing, eighteen hundred new hires.
Holy cow.
A year. And transfers, and transfers annually. And transfers have a, have a cost associated and a time associated with them as well, which is a sixty percent increase over pre-COVID. So that is an enormous amount of work.
And staff has increased by sixty percent.
It has not. So in order, in order to keep up with that and, and process new hires and keep them coming in the door quickly, the, the quicker we can get offers out, the better chance we're going to get a qualified candidate.
So is that the five positions here? The HR specialist, the HR admin?
So, so recollect back to, and this is worth sharing a little bit of a work here. Recollect back to last summer and conversations you had with your principals and probably what was their number one grief?
That they lost math teachers.
That they lost teachers because of speed of getting offers out and things like that.
Or you can get people in for interviews and stuff when they go into the pool, the hiring pool.
Yeah, the vol, the volume is, is overwhelming. And, and not to hearken back to last Thursday, but duh. So we, we have a lot of work to do in that space and need to.
But I think the thing that was concerning to me was principals had made offers to people, and then the contract didn't come, and the contract didn't come. And then people went somewhere else because they couldn't wait any longer. So we need to fix that.
Yeah, definitely. We, we think.
So this costs you to vet this?
And then the next biggest issue that you're going to probably, you're going to hear constituents from are regarding transportation. And a lot of that is just communication of bus delays or, hey, I put in a request, I want my bus stop reviewed. That takes time. Well, who's reviewing that now? Which are our lead drivers and our routing coordinators? Well, our lead drivers are out on the road every day, you know, filling a vacancy or filling in as a cell. So we need additional support in transportation office adequately. We're, we're understaffed compared to, even like on a per-student basis, to Spotsy. Understaffed from a per-student basis compared to Loudon and some other places. So one of the things, it's a no-brainer. We have one training coordinator, one full-time training person. And then we ask bus drivers to come in in the middle of the day for an hour between their runs[1783.78] to help, help train. That's not going to cut it. The biggest, one of the biggest issues we have with attracting bus drivers is they're not going to quit their current job to come and train for us for the chance of a C D L. So we need to offer them a night class. Um, and that's what Krim is working on now. He's redoing some of the curriculum and working with his staff. But we can't have our lead, our one trainer be there, you know, six o'clock in the morning until nine o'clock at night every day. So we need to add two full-time trainers to the mix. Right now, we're actually working on, we have bus driver vacancies. So we're going to use one of those bus driver vacancies to try to bring in a trainer, but we have to fill those routes first.
So if you have, if you're asking for two full-time trainers, are they both going to be for evening? Or one for day, one for evening?
It'll be like a split schedule.
Okay.
And then we need additional routing and dispatch support. So right now, all the calls are coming into our, um, our dispatch center. Overwhelming. So most of the time, you guys aren't going to hear a lot. We can handle ten, fifteen bus drivers out. On the worst days, when we have thirty, forty bus drivers out, it's too overwhelming and there's not enough staff. But even on the good days, it's overwhelming for them. It just doesn't get to the point where you're hearing the complaints. And additionally, um, we have three routing coordinators for our thirty-three school sites. And their busiest, busiest time of the year is in the summer. Same for our, our lead drivers, which are only ten-month employees. So busiest time of the year should be in the summer, ramping up for the next school year. We don't even have people there in the summer. But our three routing coordinators accrue enough overtime to pay for our other routing coordinator because of the amount of work that they have.
So we're using some of that overtime expense to, to drill down the overtime expense to cover some of the costs for the routing coordinator.
Chris, I was going to state this page says the benefit is twenty-eight percent. I recall at some point in the past, we estimated it to be forty percent with our teachers.
Is there a difference?
No, it, no, it's typically the same. Some of our, we have a few employees that have a lower rate, but most of our employees are at the twenty-eight percent. We do fully load the benefits with the exception of health benefits. So we add a flat amount for health benefits, which are in the health insurance addition line. It's not on each end of one of these lines.
So that, that would have increased this percentage if we.
Yeah, we just don't do, usually don't do a flat percentage for health insurance.
Yeah, it's a factor.
Yeah, we live at about seventy-two hundred dollars per portion for health insurance.
Oh, yeah, some of these positions, that's going to be a much higher percentage.
Yeah. All right, so back to our, our school-based growth position. So once again, we're basically, when we plug it in, it's formulaic. So now we're going and adding the seven hundred and seventy-three students to six hundred and nineteen plus the hundred and fifty-four that we added in FY twenty-four. Equates to a total of a hundred and forty-four F T Es, which I think can sound like a lot at first. But when you peel it back and look at it and when you take out, look at just the number of teachers that we're adding, um, and think about seven, or, uh, seven hundred and seventy-three students is pretty much an elementary school. And we're adding an equivalent number of teachers to fill an elementary school. So from a, from a total of students to teachers, it's pretty equivalent. When you take away the fact that some of those students are going to be special education students, some of them are going to require E S O L, um, instruction and have, have those needs. So that's where you start to see those numbers stick up is, as we have twenty-seven special education teachers added in those growth numbers, we have fifteen and a half E S O L teachers. And then at the school sites, we still have.
Does that cross all our, all our schools?
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, two and a half counselors and then paraprofessionals. So general ed, paraprofessionals would be four. And then our level two special education classrooms would be forty-eight.
So why is that forty-eight? That sounds like a lot. It's, it's not, how many classes is that? Is that one per student or in some cases?
Sort of, but some of this is also in line with other recommendations that we're going to show you to peel some of this back too. So we're adding.
Followed our staffing standard that they are now, is fully based on growth. This is what it would equate.
That, that, I'm just, I'm just going to say, I mean, I look at it and I add up twenty-two, six, thirteen, take that number, divide seven seventy-three by that, and I get fourteen kids per teacher. And that's not including special ed or E S O L.
So not all of our kids show up in the same place at the same location. We're at the same needs. So here's part of the challenge is that you could have a pocket of three kids that show up in a first grade classroom at Kate Waller Barrett, and they were staffed right at the level or right under the level where that would be, you know, five classrooms in first grade. And now those six kids bumped it up to now it's six classrooms. But that's, that's a high margin that you have to pay because of where the kids are showing up. So it's, it's kind of like where they show up and what services they need almost matters more than just the, the wrong number. Because if you were just to take the number and divide it by whatever, sure, that's a cheap way to do it, but it's not an accurate way to do it.
How do you do it?
We, we, so one of the spreadsheets that we sent you, we literally sent you the staffing based on Lionel's projection of where the kids are, what grades they are in. And yeah, it was pretty elaborate.
Yeah.
Um, and it, it basically shows you where there was an increase. You saw then the, the proportional staff also increase along the same lines. Patrick, am I explaining this correctly?
You are, and actually I can give you a live example of how these numbers actually track out. Kate Waller Barrett at the nine-thirty cutoff this year had seven hundred and eighty-seven students enrolled and had forty general education teachers, kind of classroom teachers, your, uh, you know, help, P, music, art. Um, you have to staff specialists, and that's not taking into account reading math specialist, I T R T, not taking into account special education or E S O L. So that's, you have, you're correct, just the giant, the total there is forty-one for seven seventy-three. So that's, I, I hope that explains these numbers.
But then elementary, elementary is going to have a, a higher need than the middle and the high school because their classes are generally larger.
And I really know, but it didn't always work out that way because of, you have things like C T D classes in high school that have, they have a strict, half twenty students.
But then, but then there's going to be a limit on how many students can take those classes. But is, I, I used to have these arguments with, and they were arguments with a symbolizer many, many years ago. And he would tell me, he'd say, well, you're getting, you know, just because you're getting five hundred kids doesn't mean you divide that by the number of classrooms. Because when you spread them out, there are going to be some classrooms where there's room and some classrooms where you might have to, to bump up. So I wouldn't just say seven seventy-three equals a school. If, if it was elementary, maybe, maybe, but not, not.
It's a generalization. It's a generalization and like wrong numbers. So a good example too is to like, look at like high school, thirteen F T Es. So there's a lot behind that thirteen F T Es because really what that is, is it's probably one point two English F T Es, point eight math F T Es, point six social stuff, you know? There's a lot of cutaways in that and it may end up shaking out that it's a portion of an F T E at a specific school based on where they're going up in terms of numbers and in terms of class enrollments. So again, it's like where matters just as much.
But we won't know until, I mean, Lionel's great.
That, that's right, that's right.
I mean, he's fantastic, but he can't tell us exactly who's going to be going to what school. Or how many years.
Yes. We can estimate based on percentages, but.
Correct, and, and we were, we were a hundred and fifty-four kids off effectively. And, and I will say that that is a margin that we then have to adjust for. Now, when we're off before the start of the school year, we do move F T Es. So if there's a third grade teacher, uh, that's extra at a school and we don't need the extra third grade teacher, but we do need them in kindergarten, we make adjustments within the building or we move them to another school site.
And that's what we did.
I was going to bring up kindergarten because I have seen many, many years where they're scrambling by Labor Day to add a kindergarten class because kids don't know when to show up to school or, and all of a sudden.
You had an extra at very far, who ended up in kindergarten.
And you had to like.
A hundred percent.
And our son's whole, they compressed, like, I don't, it might not have been, but like first grade, they've decided to consolidate to make a classroom and a teacher for kindergarten.
I mean, you still have to know that some of this seven hundred and seventy-three, and I know that it'll totally like even change things a little bit with, for what Sarah was discussing, is that some of our kids in seven seventy-three are coming to school for, let's say, grades. There's a bunch of kids that are just coming to school for goals that would be then in particular, like in the, um, in the special ed.
Potentially.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and there's sounds of a different ratio.
If anything, I would expect you to mean you're going to add seven hundred and seventy-three students wherever you need them. To me, two point five counselors, knowing how thin our counselors are already spread, that, that would be something that I would say, why is it so low? But I'm not, I'm just, I think that's a hypothetical question.
And so you may be, you may be thinking about a portion of a counselor or five partial counselors. Now, I will say this, one of your legislative agendas just cleared the House Appropriations Committee and also just cleared Senate Appropriations Committee, which was to increase the counselor ratio to fifty to one. And if that happens, your counselor member is about to go through the roof. And you're going to be looking at twenty-two point five counselors.
And my thought is that's a Q and A.
Yeah, oh, yes. State's share of an S O Q.
Yes.
Yeah.
But sometimes the state tells us to do something and it's not money. Why? It's not an S O Q.
But, but that's a, that's a relevant conversation point, so.
And, and I, and I know Lionel gets a lot of praise, but one more thing. He, he set a very high bar. He kept saying a hundred and fifty-four out of thirty-one thousand is still really, really close. I know, I know you're kidding, but it's like less than a half a percent. So we're, we're very lucky to be that close, so I just want to point that out.
Yeah, at least, at least they're over and we're getting more money for them.
Yeah.
If they were under and we weren't getting the money, we had a different problem.
Correct. And a conservative projection is the way to go and we would endorse that moving forward. And that's what he does for us.
And then kind of down at the bottom there are, are support positions, which we talked about here too. Thirty-seven and a half sounds like a lot, but twenty-five of those are bus drivers and bus attendants. We haven't added those in a few years. Um, we're going to need them and we're going to be getting trainers and we're going to be recruiting and we got to push and find them. But with that dedicated and hopefully with the, the night classes, we'll be able to attract them. We're like right up actually fully staffed for bus attendants right now. We need more because we're having trouble and we don't have any sub-attendants, which there are times when an attendant comes out and we have to have an attendant on a bus. A bus driver has to go off of their route to be the attendant on that bus, especially on bus. So that's where we're at with attendants. We need more attendants, uh, just as much as we do drivers. Um, all right, so going back to, uh, when, uh, Mr. Burnett presented to the school board in December and we said, hey, here's our staffing standards. This would be our plan for, for next year. Uh, according to our staffing standards, we said it was going to be about sixty-two, um, total F T Es to implement those, the ones that we deferred from year one and the additional ones that we said we needed for year two before you account for the growth. But those sixty-two, when, when presented with the budget that we had and wanting to do the priorities of compensation for staff and, and implementing phase three of the teacher salary scale, we didn't have enough funds, um, to cover everything that was on our, on our listing there. So we need to cut back some, so.
We can either pay you where we can help you.
Yeah, correct, correct, that's one hundred percent. So we, and, and this is a, there's a bigger breakdown of each one of these and the exhibits for each of those staffing standards and what makes up each of those F T Es. But we had staffing standards that we deferred in year one that we wanted to do, that we couldn't do it based on the funding. They got pushed to year two. We can't do them in year two either. We had some amendments that were proposed and some of that came from the schools that worked with Patrick to say, hey, let's make some tweaks here and there. Uh, and now it's going to be seventeen F T Es. We're pushing that off again. We're making an adjustment to our level two special ed classrooms that saves twenty net F T Es. Some of those are teachers, but we have to add pairs because of the adjustment.
That's why you did that forty-eight pairs.
Yeah, correct, correct. And then looking at adjusting our fourth and fifth grade, um, class sizes, only equates to about five F T Es across the division. And then our ratio that we apply for our secondary, uh.
So we're not cutting anything?
No.
We're just not, we're not reducing to where we want to be.
So the net impact.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're adding to them reduced.
Like twenty, twenty F T Es for the.
Wait, I have a question.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Oh.
I was on the slide before I.
So you're adding more pairs and bringing in less level two educators? And that is a responsible thing to do for those students?
From sixty to sixty.
Yeah, the, the adult to student ratio, it's not my favorite solution. And if we have the additional resources, we should fund that. But I will say that it keeps the adult to student ratio the same, two to one in those classrooms, which is good. So it's not my favorite solution, it's my second favorite solution.
But part of this is we can't get the special education teachers that we're in, correct?
We actually did okay this past year, um, in, in hiring for special education. And, and I would say that like to the extent that we are, uh, we are out ahead of this early like we are right now, we're better positioned for everything. We did, we did okay with math relatively speaking. Certainly a lot better than our neighbors and certainly better than the price point that we offer and salary would suggest. But there's always also a lot of room for improvement to get the top candidate that we want. I mean, there's a big difference between getting an Olympic medalist and someone who hasn't played the sport yet. So, you know, there's, there's a, a big difference between the two. And, and so I think us kind of getting our heads wrapped around our strategy and our approach makes a big difference as to what that actually looks like in the classroom and the level of support that we can provide. It's suboptimal, there's no way to sugarcoat that.
No, but to, so to look at this from the perspective of, um, or, or just kind of clarify some of the intricate webs in this spider web we're in. This is, so this is our growth, so we're not even, this is what we're planning to have if we had everything that we wanted money-wise, right, to come on board.
Not that we wanted money-wise, what we need, expect to get essentially.
No, this is what we cannot have right now.
So a hundred and seven point five of the above positions, we will not be able to add financial, for financial reasons.
All right, so is that the hundred and sixty-seven, so I'm subtracting the hundred and seven.
So, no, but hundred, hundred and sixty-seven is what we're left over.
This is the net increase.
Left over, okay.
Yeah, that's our net increase. So, well, we need to shift over thirty-one positions. We had projected growth of a hundred and forty-four F T Es. We had our support positions we talked about. Based on the staffing standards that we had already deferred and planned to adopt, it would have been an additional sixty-two, but changes that we made to here and.
I mean, that's shifting the, the grant. I, I remember, Dr. Chase, didn't you ask that many times? What will happen when the grant runs out? You know, but when, when we were hiring all these positions, what would happen? And, and I, I, maybe you can tell us your recollection, my recollection was, well, we should, you know, we have an immediate need and, you know, we'll phase it out. There was never any, we'll just roll them into the, the operating. I'm not, I'm not criticizing this, but that was a question that was asked many times when we hired those positions, because we knew it would end.
Right, well, the issue is that when we, we just had positions in there that we understood were going to end, that we hired for COVID relief. But then there was the year where we decided to put positions in there that were not just for COVID. And so those are the positions that are looking after.
Yeah, it's a decision point.
To build on that, I feel like, and it was probably our first year, so I might not be remembering clearly at all, um, where there was a conversation that we were almost top-heavy on, uh, support, not support, but pair specifically positioned in our budget.
Oh, yeah.
And we stringed some of those out and are we.
We knew that was going to happen.
Right, and I'm not saying, but like if we're adding them back now.
Yeah.
So these aren't actually pairs, the pairs are phased out. So the first year, they were phased out over a couple of years. This will be the last year, yep.
But, but you still have to maintain.
Phased out.
Yes, but you still have to maintain proportionally as you continue to grow to maintain support as you continue to grow. Now, there's, there are some weaknesses here that, that we've kind of identified as some real challenges. And some of this is positive in the one sense. You can follow the, the money of Stafford County back for the last half decade plus and tell exactly where you were committed to spending your resources. Teachers in the classroom. You committed to making sure that teachers in the classroom had everything that they need. But one of the downsides with that is that the rest of your organization is also growing and teachers need support to do their jobs effectively too. So some of the other stuff doesn't get right-sized because you're focused on just teacher support. Well, you know, we're trying to find that delicate balance of how do we do both? Or to a reasonable extent, to try to, to create systems and structures where you can do both. But, but you got to proportionally start growing the organization to, to match its size in totality, not just the individual classroom and what we do in the individual classroom.
Transportation and that, they're realistically.
Yeah, and, and we've kind of ignored it, honestly.
No, not in the past few years. So that's where we put a whole lot of emphasis and a lot of resources in the transportation. But only because it came to the crisis level. But only because it came to the crisis level. So when something comes to a crisis, then we react to the top. But that's what happened with transportation because for years, nobody really did have done.
And I will say, I know it doesn't look for compliments, but implementing the staffing standards we have and going to that formulaic approach can help us prevent those catastrophes and those things rising up. So we're adequately staffing schools based on a formulaic approach instead of, we get a year or two down and all of a sudden a school is understaffed drastically or they're short on counselors. And so one of the goals that Patrick and I have with Thomas is staffing standards for our support positions as well so that, hey, as we continue to grow, I can tell you that the additional work that H R does, all that still comes through my office, and we still have to do payroll and benefits. We've got to process their payroll. Every new hire he has is another person for my office to process. Every termination is a payoff. So we need to have some staffing standards that actually tie to our support positions, which we're working on.
We're always behind. I mean, we probably should be looking at this every year. Because we're deferring year one, we're deferring year two, we're deferring year three. Where does that leave us for the five-year plan? Really far behind.
Because we're twenty-eight, so we're rough.
I would suggest we take a look at that again. Not that we want to change them, but what is a realistic expectation, particularly to give to our staff? Because the office people have been crying realistically and practically, for good reason, that they've been ignored. And that's been, I think you know why.
Harpens, you said they need additional staff. Right, you can't.
But as long as we have it on, in a formula versus we need, okay, how many do you need? I need three people. But if you put it with a formula based on this many, you can have this many. Now, when can we implement that is a whole nother conversation. But at least to have the formula where it's not, you know, the one who cries the loudest that gets what's on.
All right, be careful because time's about to stop, so I'm gonna comment Richmond here for a second. J L R actually reached out to us, and we were one of the divisions that J L R did interview for how you staff a large school division. And we shared our ratios, we shared some of our proportional staffing, and they came to the same conclusion that we gave, which is like, you know, our organization needs to grow and shrink as our student population and staff population grow and shrink to accommodate for the workflow. And so there is, there is something to that, and we do, we do need to be just as attentive to that. And whether it's on a five-year time horizon or a seven-year time horizon or whatever, we've got to communicate what those needs are. I think we've taken a big step in communicating what those needs are, at least enumerating them. But it's like this list, unfortunately, it's just gonna get longer.
Yeah, that's what concerns me.
And.
Staff thinks that we're gonna be doing this. We want to do it, we've approved it, but every year we have to defer it. That's a whole different, that's beyond the budget season discussion, but I think we need to have it because look at that.
Because we're not gonna start paying money.
But if we followed our standards, we would have a hundred and seven point five more positions, right?
Yeah.
And that's assuming we get the funding for the rest of them.
Correct. All right, press on. Sorry, we're short on time.
All right, so other items, so our kind of other comp and benefits, ups and downs. We've talked about this a little bit before, V R S adjustment. So V R S had proposed a decrease in the employer's share of the contribution.
Good news.
Yes, this one is good news, and for once, the preferences are good, yeah. So yeah, even, I think probably even back from Dr. Chase, Dr. Warner, since y'all have been on the board, we've seen increases in the rates where it cost us four million plus. So this time we actually have a saving. So V R S requested actually a bigger cut, but included in the governor's budget was a reduction of the employer's share by one point three nine. So for every professional employee, we pay fifteen point two-three percent of their salary.
Twenty percent benefits, twenty-eight percent.
That's part of it.
So that's more than now.
Yeah.
Of that portion.
Yeah, and so I just want to clarify that this does not have an impact on our employees. This doesn't reduce their retirement income in any way. This is just our share. It doesn't make the employee's share go up either, so they stay at the mandatory five percent.
It's great that they did that for us this year, but when they go the other direction, it really sucks.
Yes.
And it does.
And it does go the other direction.
So also need to increase our health insurance contribution by one point seven five. And I would say it's probably aggressive and maybe needs to be higher, but right now, that's where we're at. We need to have our renewal meeting with Anthem, scheduling that in the next few weeks. But it's always in the February timeframe, not great per budget. We have a reserve in our health benefits fund, but we're kind of eating into that each year too. So we've got to be careful that we've got to keep a little bit of reserve, and so we don't keep contributing. This one point seven five covers some of those new employees as well. So it's probably about a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar net increase that isn't attributed to just new employees. So this is covering some of the rising costs in health insurance. We were doing very well for many years. It's why we built up a reserve. And now that's kind of starting to flatten out and go the other way. We're, we're not quite seeing the, I'll say savings, but it was very flat when we were seeing nationally twenty percent increases a year people were seeing in health insurance, and we were pretty flat for single-digit one, two, three percent increases. So just a heads up that we're gonna continue to see those health insurance increases, so don't be surprised. The next year's budget, we're gonna have to play some catch-up there too.
Yeah, and before he moves on, Chris deserves a lot of credit. He self-manages one of the largest health insurance funds in the state and does a great job. And we have a very healthy fund in the black, and it's due to Chris's leadership, and he really deserves a lot of credit.
Okay, good job.
So we, last year we increased our health insurance rates by five percent. We don't really want to do that two years in a row. I would suggest maybe every other year we're gonna look at that, so we're in a re-bench marketing year this year. We can afford to pick it up. Maybe next year is a year that we look at it again and we would see an increase. We also need to look at our dental rates, and so that will be included in next year's analysis as well. Then just hourly compensation as you increase rates, we need to adjust hourly comp as well. So just kind of playing catch-up on our hourly comp, not a big amount, but we have to keep up with that as well.
But where are substitutes? None.
They're actually part of this too, yeah.
An hour?
Yeah, as far as this for filling in, that two hundred and seventy-two is helping fill the gap for our substitutes in our.
You know, how we treat them on the surveys and things like that for next year.
Yeah.
I'm sure you said it was too late to get into that.
We actually did. We adjusted that policy, didn't we?
Yeah, but we were gonna look at something else. I can't remember what.
It was long-term subs. Yeah, you did long-term.
Yeah.
For a climate.
Yeah, which was not always the case.
And that was the amendment that the board made.
Right, but there was something else we said, we couldn't address it at that time because it was more involved, and we would do that when we got to the budget.
No, I think that it was this. I think it was the long-term.
Wasn't anything else?
I mean, there was talk about adding leave and stuff, but at that point, they needed to be a contracted employee, and that's where we have our daily billing subs for, so if you want to be a contracted employee, be a daily builder.
Remember, I was just willing to give that one, so we'll look at something else.
Okay. So that's kind of it for the staffing and the other comp and benefits, but then we have our non-comp items, really our central office departments and our school site funding. Our school site allocation is an increase of six hundred and thirty-four K. Once again, more students means more funding directly to the schools for supplies, materials. Also, hadn't done this in a while. We wanted to increase the rate that we provide each of our schools. So we took the rate that they have per student, and it's different at elementary, middle, and high, and we're increasing it five percent. So basically, if they added zero students, they would still see a five percent increase. It's not a ton of money on it. You have an elementary school getting a ninety thousand dollar a year school site funding for, you know, eight hundred kids or something, so now we're adding five percent to that. So I think roughly four to five thousand dollars for an elementary school. Middle and high schools are gonna see a little bit more because they have water amounts. Also, set aside additional funds for trailers. This was something that came up. We were funding it this year. But we wanted to go and give it to the schools and let them, hey, if they need to have a water cooler in those trailers right now, we're trying to keep up with that centrally for maintenance. Let them handle it. They know when they're gonna run out of water. They can manage where they want them. So let them fund it if they want maybe hourly compensation for, to pay umbrellas or para or somebody to help with that transition from the modular into the school. So five hundred dollars per classroom doesn't seem like a ton, but it is a few thousand dollars per school to help with that.
And then also summer enrichment activities. You know, kind of leave summer school and some of those additional things that we do kind of out in terms of summer activity funds. So we wanted to account for that. I mean, just kind of leave them out, so just gonna stop doing that.
Well, and then we jump into our academic, or our, sorry, central office kind of departments and their non-comp budgets. I say non-comp, it's a little bit of comp slipped in there because it's additional hourly stuff. So academic programs, right now we have ESRO programs at our elementary schools for after-school programs. They were funded by not the big ESRO grant, but there was an after-school grant. And we also have it at like Drew and Shirley High in order to continue those programs because they run out, which there has been a great benefit. It's, reaps great rewards and getting great feedback on those programs.
Sounds for, when we judge this, just between A and B, what is the option? I think we maybe ought to get some public support for the A.
So it is, you have exhibits for every department and kind of breaks it down and summarizes it.
What I'm just reading, one point four.
Did you use all in Virginia? I was gonna ask the same question.
Yes, and we will, but here's part of the challenge is that we know that those programs should outlive the two years of all in Virginia. And all in Virginia is hyper-focused on the tutoring piece and just a select group of kids, but we have kids that are outside of that identified group of body that we would want to support as well. And there isn't a funding mechanism for that, so it's almost like, keep the programs going that you know you want to continue so that you have a sustainable revenue source. But then the all-in funds will use as augment. I gotta tell you that all-in funds are not enough money to make the kind of impact that they claim that they think they're gonna make on the timeline that they are proposing to make them. So it's, we're gonna be in like another fiscal cliff with that as well as like, what do we want to continue and what do we not want to continue?
I fear our supervisors will see it as, oh, they got this extra money to educate students. And it's a ton of, you know, because it sounds like a lot of money to people who aren't looking at these slideshows. So I feel like that's going to come up in especially like, from our more physically conservative members, they may want to know exactly how that money is going to be used and why it's not money that they no longer have to give us or it's a planned additional funds. That's not a raise that we can use however we want. It is earmarked for a specific purpose and should really have nothing to do with our budget discussion with them.
So also have just increased, and there's a little bit of a game here, but on our student fees, exam fees, we have A P exams, we have I B exams, we have dual enrollment fees. All the students pay those, they remit them to us, and then we pay them. And not every student pays, so they're free and reduced students, it is, so we have to pick up the tab on there. Some of this has an offsetting revenue piece, but unfortunately, they, our revenue piece has been higher than our, or sorry, it's been lower than our expense the last few years, so I can't increase the revenue to help offset that in this situation. And a lot of that is because not as many students are paying because it's a higher free and reduced percentage.
So good news. A higher percentage of free lunch students are accessing our highest tier of courses, and they are taking the tests and doing very well.
That leads to a question. I don't know if you've heard this as much as I have, Dr. Chase, but I have heard from families whose kids want to take the rigorous coursework but do not want to take the test, do not want the college credits, and we still make them take it.
In fact, a few years ago, it was changed so that in order to get the weighted credit, they had to take the A P exam.
So they can still get the weighted credit. That's great.
We changed that.
Especially for kids who know they're gonna have to retake whatever class it is because it's attached to a major they want. They want to pay for it essentially twice. An O A P class is cheaper than a college credit, but if you can save all that money, that's good to know.
Yeah, but there, but there is a gap. So like, just like student lunch debt, it's like an unbudgeted gap, so we've got to, we've got to cover that gap.
Looking at community engagement, just continuation of current events. This isn't an expansion of current events that we're doing. This is student and staff recognition events. And then also funding for student interns, some hourly wages there, so not a ton of money. Back to H R, we need to increase our funding that we have for tuition assistance. So that could be tuition. We do a, you know, help with a, for our first couple of years, teachers, for brand-new teachers, we'll do a help with like student loan repayment that's not higher than what we do for our tuition assistance. So it's an either-or, they can't do both. But then for our other teachers, we do offer our tuition assistance to take graduate-level courses, a master's level courses, whether that's looking to get a master's certificate or in a specific course to, it could be for paraprofessionals looking to get a teaching degree. But we're seeing that those numbers are going up in those commitments, so putting additional funds there.
That's a control cost for a particular amount for persons?
Yes, there's a C A S.
This C A S is fifteen hundred dollars per person, per year, unless they are taking coursework specifically leading to licensure. So it's twenty-five hundred. And then there are some very specific circumstances where we go above that. People who are taking coursework who become eligible to teach dual enrollment courses, since the candidate who teaches those courses is so small. And also for the programs where we have a specific partnership or teach a pipeline.
And just for full transparency, this spelled out, like each one of these, like the line item is here in this attachment so that you can see like.
It's in more detail than what you see here, but if you have questions.
We're just hitting the highlights.
Yeah, if you have questions, just shoot us an email. We'll respond.
Yeah.
I'll be back.
Okay.
Also, about fifty thousand dollars specifically in there for a comp and classification study. Looking at service staff, non-instructional. With talking to Patrick, we, a little bit easier to kind of do our analysis of our service, or sorry, our instructional staff. We can do our teacher scale comparisons, but for Twilio and Spot Team, we've got our five-day approach for our teacher scale. Looking at classification, and some of that could be an exempt versus non-adequate classification, and then also where at on the service scale those positions should be. There's a lot of different positions and a lot of different areas they could fall into and a lot of comparisons with different other divisions or non-divisions. You know, a lot of positions we have, for example, I have CPAs that could, don't have to work in a school division. They can work anywhere that is needed by CPA. So not always the only comparison is another school division.
But it is good for comparison, like for example, the county just did a study, and we discovered that public safety pays a hundred and three percent of the market rate for its positions, and we pay eighty percent of the market rate.
For teachers.
For teachers.
Not a shocker.
So, we're probably good, pressing out of that. Good thing.
And then just knowing that it is actually a policy that we do a periodic, that we do a periodic comp and class study. Haven't done one since two thousand and eighteen, and so definitely.
Another kind of, there's another piece of legislation being considered, and it may have been filled since I last looked at it, but that would require us to honor the years of service in the military on our teacher scale. And I didn't know what fiscal impact that might have on us. Should we, should it pass? And should we, because I don't know what they're gonna, like how they're gonna fund that, but.
We're relatively low cheers to teachers. I'm trying to think what it is. I don't.
It's very low.
Single digits, for sure.
Well, true, our teachers are single digits. We do, obviously in this area, we have a number of that are, that work here. And depending on the position that they're in, but if it's for teaching positions or for a local license position, we do currently have all seat work regardless of what your position in military was, where we get five to one credit for military service for steps on the teacher scale. So it would not be a starting from zero fiscal impact, but it would be, it would be something.
Great.
It starts here almost zero.
And then for some of these areas, just wanting to highlight, some of the things that you'll show up in our unclined needs. We had, you know, one of the things that we've been trying to do for the last few years is expand that mentor-teacher. We don't really pay a lot for somebody to be a mentor. We really need to triple it to even make it worthwhile. People do it really to kind of build that camaraderie and to be good sports and.
Help us out.
And help us out. It's like a few hundred dollars for the entire year to be a mentor-teacher. Yes, yes, mentor-teacher.
Wait, how much do we pay for a person? For a year?
No, no, like two, three hundred. How much we pay our mentors?
A year, five hundred.
Yeah, it's five hundred for year one and like for year two, it's, because they do it for two years.
Yeah.
I mean, while we even pay them, that's really.
Um, something, do we, now that we are.
Karma credits, that's also working out.
How are we with building stuffs?
Karma credits, right?
Because one of the things that I remember hearing from my mentors that they wish they had is they would be allowed to have sub-coverage so they could go observe their mentee. Because one of the things that I remember hearing from my mentors, that they wish they had is they would be allowed to have sub-coverage so they could go observe their mentee. Um, they've been able to provide like better feedback rather than just conversations. And I don't know if we're in a position to kind of do that, yeah.
Yeah, so we actually do, yeah, we have a line of the budget for one release day for mentors uh, to, for that exact purpose. But some fill rate is the actual challenge there, not.
And I, you know, and I don't, I'm not a teacher obviously, but I don't even know if they would use that as a full day or is it, you know, one block on one day?
Well, it's usually not even a one-to-one with the neighbors.
They have several other kids.
Yeah, you have to go door to door.
Yeah.
Alright, so our kind of facilities and operations, a lot falls in here, so this looks like a big number. But um, you get eaten up very quickly when you think about um, a five percent increase in our custodial contract is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's a kind of mandated part of the contract that has gotta go up each year because the custodian contractor wants to give, is gonna provide a raise to the custodians um, to keep them happy. So we're gonna see those increases. Um, also gonna have utilities, just electric, gas, um, water increases. Um, come, I think total is uh, is three or four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, but our electric bill is going on two hundred days.
Yeah. Keep the lights on.
Considering everybody who's looking at it. Wow, considering we have thirty-six percent. What percent?
We are not energy efficient.
Yeah, I know, um, yeah, it's not, I can get you to.
We see that literally, we keep the lights on in the room.
Yeah. Also required to do.
And close the door.
That's okay. I know we just did substantial water testing. But now we're actually a couple of years past where we did a lot of that water testing.
Yeah.
Um, for, for lead. So we're gonna have to, we're trying to develop a plan where we can just get on our rotation where we rotate our schools through.
So they're not all?
They're not all in the same year. Now, and same with our other air quality control testing, we just gotta set aside.
Is that HVAC carts and supplies? I mean, isn't that like a million dollars for some of these whalers and?
That's, that's just small stuff. That's just the increase in the small stuff and to keep up with some of the repairs. It's not replacements. It's just repairs and parts.
So there's, there's a couple of little tidbits here that are worth pointing out. Um, in particular, the environmental compliance piece. Uh, and I, I have intimate knowledge of this, having worked in, in Chesterfield where we had a big Legionella crisis. Uh, which, which eventually turned into state legislature. So Legionella testing is something that we do on a pretty regular basis. There's not state money that's committed for that. We are, we just do it. It's expensive, um, like a lot of the other testing that we do or the, a lot of the environmental testing that we do. It's expected. We do it on a regular basis. We need, we do it in the areas that we need to do it.
Is there no money available for like health department grants to state for us to go after for this sort of?
So part of the problem is this is an ongoing expense and it's already codified in, literally into law. So it's not something that a grant would really finance because you're gonna ask for it every year and the law says that you have to do it.
Mm-hmm.
I just feel like that's a health department, that's becoming from the health department.
We're only about a month clear of when we became Legionella free across our schools.
I was gonna say, do we just do that?
We had that. We still had water fountains shut down until about a month ago.
And next summer, we'll do it all over again.
All of us?
Yeah, because, because here's the thing, anytime that there's standing water or anytime that there's, you know, warm temperatures and standing water, it's a recipe for Legionella.
So what would define standing water? Cause I know a lot of our schools do actually operate much closer to your round with our, you know, great learning mentors and.
So you got, you got a handful of things. You've got cooling towers where there may be just condensation that collects on a cooling tower. And the cooling tower isn't operational all the time. It takes breaks. So when you hear AC unit kick on and then you hear it kick off, the condensation will start to pool. And then when that starts to pool, mixed with warm temperatures, you're going to get Legionella.
Okay. Nothing.
Fun times.
Uh, just some of the unfunded requests that we had from our O and M department. Obviously, um, one of the things that you don't hear a lot about, but similar to kind of some of the behind the scenes, behind the walls stuff is high bay and then duck cleaning. So HVAC ducts cleaning, O and M would love to do more regular maintenance on that. And then also high base. So think about your cafeterias in your high schools, um, or even elementary schools and getting up there and cleaning those, that costs money. Um, and it's something that our custodians or another group can come in and do. Uh, and since, I honestly, since I've been uh, in the school division, that's been something that's been on their budget trying to get funded is to do that high base funding uh, more consistently. We do very low than that.
I was gonna say, what, what frequency are we at and what frequency would we want to do that later?
I, um, annually is where we need to be. Cause they wanted, they wanted to try to do it on a, like over a winter break is where they would look to. And had deferred and cut from the budget, a lot of capital replacement items, just like trucks and, and mowers. So we actually have several O and M trucks. If you see them going from school to school, somebody's maintaining all of this equipment as well as we can with the budget that we do. Um, and then mowers for our, our maintenance staff as well.
Can I ask, um, when we're replacing some of these HVACs? And I know like in our schools, we have the plug-in um, air purifiers from COVID time. Are we doing a, a better job of replacing HVAC systems so that those can go away? Because they also are gonna have, like I don't wanna be on a, um, you know, the short-lived expectancy replacement of those if we can do better.
We have enough air filters to keep those running through next school year. And then we're done unless we want to, several hundred thousand dollars to buy all new air filters for the air purifier units. But it, it's not just a simple kind of plug-and-play to, to overhaul your HVAC units.
No, I don't mean overhaul. I'm just saying going forward.
What she's asking. So the answer is no. And I'll tell you why. Because the, the filtration system that we would need to be like COVID filtering is a MERV thirteen filtration, which is a very fine grade filtration. I'm getting this right, aren't I?
Sounds right.
You gotta steer it in it.
Yeah.
Um, and so the amount of air pressure to push through a MERV thirteen filter is extraordinary. So here's part of the problem. So let's say we've got two massive, you know, five-ton units that are at, I think that's actually probably two-ton units. At like Brookpoint High School, right?
Right.
One on one part of the building, one on the other part of the building, but building, uh, unit A goes down. And we replace it with a MERV thirteen filtration system. We have all but assured that unit B will go down like that.
Right.
Because we have forced now air.
Right, that's the unit.
At, at a different rate that will be problematic. So it's kind of like, you gotta do it all or not.
Okay.
And so this is kind of like, as we bring.
So what are we doing for our new schools?
Yeah, new schools coming online should be fine. They're, they're gonna have a more advanced filtration system, a stronger unit and be, be more up to date.
I just don't wanna have to like repeat history and repeat ridiculous things.
Yes, but as you retrofit, and there's other solutions. And I, and I will say that this is on our unfunded list.
Okay.
But there's other solutions that can clean the air a little bit better than even the portable units. That was a, um, an emergency purchase buy.
Sure.
And I'm sure there's a lot of emotion in the emergency purchase buy. I'm not sure you'd go back and do that same purchase again. You probably still are.
Alright, transportation, um, seen an increase in just our fleet costs, equipment and vehicle maintenance. Um, the cost to transport our McKinney Vento kids. So whenever we can, we use our own bus. But sometimes depending on locations, we have McKinney Vento students that are lived outside of Stafford County, but we are still required to transport them. Um, but there is, we actually almost have like a charter service where they're approved vendor. Those approved vendors cost a lot of money to go pick up those students on a daily basis when we can't. So we're all, we are, we have used federal funds. The federal funds are going away. And this year, we're actually uh, using a different source of federal funding, but it was kind of like a short-term fix to get us through this year. Um, and this uh, additional money set aside in the transportation budget would kind of have any operating fund that we can continue with. We'll still look for the federal dollars. And if we do, then it frees up what's in our operating budget to be used, um, kind of as one-time money somewhere else. But those federal funds just aren't consistent enough for us to keep up with. And then we're scrambling every month to try to find enough money to pay the bill to transport those students. And but we've got, we're still required to continue.
So total was one million?
Yeah.
But number three looks like it's, it's a hundred and fifty K pretty much, a thirteen.
No, so we already have ten, so it's only three total, like new buses that we're trying to add into the budget. Cause we already have ten in our budget now. So it's not a million dollar, it's not thirteen times a hundred and fifty K. It's just three times a hundred and fifty K. So it's more like four hundred and fifteen. An increase in our cyclic replacement for buses.
And we're going.
But, but I wanted to get you some feedback that this will get us to thirteen. Our goal is we need to be working towards twenty-five per year.
So we're gonna incrementally add a few more until we get to an annual replacement rate of twenty-five buses per year. Candidly, by the time we get there, it'll probably be thirty, thirty buses per year because we will up grow to forty thousand students.
Well, at some point, maybe not in our way, but at some point, these students are, they're enough, they're enough. Because we could have some of the neighborhoods, like in my district.
Yeah.
You know, we used, we had all the stores in Markville because that's where the, was, was that, where the students were. But the, the students have graduated, but they're not. So I don't think this is a forever thing. And I, I, I don't see where it's gonna end, but at some point, realistically, you know, we're gonna be like these other school districts that are not growing.
Oh yeah, so, so Fairbanks and Loudon are, are at the place right now where they're getting some maturity as, as far as community growth goes. But one of the things that we do need to watch for is that Stafford is still very attractive. And so there's a, there's a neighborhood lifecycle that our families in, in our, in our neighborhoods experience. Whereas they had kids ten years ago, the kids graduated high school. For the next ten years, the parents live in the big house until the parents downsize and sell their house to another family. And then that family cycles back over. And then you have other neighborhoods like Embry Mill, which is actually a high turn and a very tight. So there is a very short window of time where there's empty nesters in that neighborhood and it's almost all full occupancy with children all the time. It's a very different neighborhood lifecycle. It's a smaller neighborhood lifecycle. Whereas more mature neighborhoods that are more well-established, that are, that have been here longer, will have a longer uh, neighborhood lifecycle before they turn over and start generating children again.
And this is, this is why I beat the drum on, on uh, the retirement communities are not zero impact on school.
Correct.
Because the, for, at least for my area, seeing those homes go in at Embry Mill is like, oh, it's like right across the street.
Yeah, it. Retirement communities until they're not.
It, it means your retired families that are in a multifamily home now move out to the retirement community and then who moves into their home.
Exactly, yeah. And that's, you know, my neighborhood's at, at that age where everybody is, we're having the original owners move out.
Well, and honestly, even in my, but we also have neighborhoods with our military turnover where military families PCSing somewhere with one kid. And another military family's coming in with four or five. So there's also that constancy of PCSing.
Which makes Smiley's job even tougher of trying to do those projections. He does, looks at a lot of trends.
Well, we want him to have fun when he comes to work.
Yeah, it's challenging. So need about two million dollars to fully fund that bus cyclic replacement. Uh, we're just gonna have to get there over time.
I've never thought about that many dollars.
So one of, one of the departments has saw the biggest cut from their request is technology. Um, ultimately ended up with an increase of about one point two million dollars to try to keep up with cyclic replacement and, and software. So um, we had some ESAR software that was carrying over. We tried to eliminate that as much as we can. We have some in the academic programs, a little bit that leaked over from into technology as well. Some of that was software that we increased the number of licenses because we needed to make it available for more students when they were remote. Um, so some of that we're either trying to skinny back now to a more reasonable amount or doing away with the software. One thing Jay's office is also doing is a big software review. So we're trying to scale back that way to see which ones are effective and which ones are actually being used. Um, but we also need to replace hardware. So servers, once again, not, not sexy, but they're behind the walls, they're keeping everything going. Um, and then classroom um, uh, equipment as well. Um, I can tell you Jay wants more money for cyclic replacement, given the additional unfunded requests thrown down there. He actually requested three and a half million dollars more to try to keep up with our student and teacher replacements. Our projectors that are in all of our classrooms are nearing like, like nearing complete like extinction almost, where we're not able to support them. So we're trying to figure out what our alternative is gonna be.
Lifespan, what's the lifespan?
Well, those projectors are, they're, they're over, on the projector specifically.
On any, unlike just as.
Like our textbooks are roughly five to six years and we're extending them past.
As far as we can.
Past that, yeah. We have desktops that are still operating off of a Windows-based system that we're gonna get.
Alright, so let's stop right here. We have desktops.
Yeah.
I love it.
It's good though. It's good to admit that.
Oh no, you've never heard anybody about it for a while.
That was the number one complaint I got from bits and Smith teachers. Desktops.
And we are, smart projectors, aren't we phasing those out for smart boards anyway, or do we still need both?
So still need both. It's cause those, when you put up these smart boards, where does it go? On top of your dry erase board, which means now, if I want a dry erase board, I'm writing directly on the TV. Most teachers don't want that, right? So we're trying to facilitate, smart boards and this approach can work great in a third grade classroom. Right now it works great in a tenth grade classroom. So it's gonna be different depending on the subject and the class.
We need to go back to chalkboard so that the kids can go after school. Get, enhance the desk. You got it.
So safety and security, we talked a little bit about the retreat, but just a little bit of money left, um, we left in there to start doing a phased approach to upgrading the film. Not even upgrading, but putting film on our windows. It just makes it harder to break uh, the windows. Uh, but also just have.
Uh, based on the safety and security, years ago, we did a safety and security audit. You know, the, the, um, board members weren't a part of that yet, but um, we got a closed session to understand. Are, are we keeping up with that as like an audit and how often do we do that audit that we can sit down and listen to?
So I'll say, I know, um, Mr. Zook, aware of that audit and keeps up with it to the point of where he has funding. So some of the items on there are necessarily the dollars tied to them.
Some of it was, it was, it was a shopping cart of everything you might possibly ever want for security and not relevant necessarily to our.
Collages.
But it is something that he uses, he uses to make decisions on.
Okay.
Um.
Are we gonna do another one anytime or we're good?
Uh, I'll check with.
Okay.
With Mr. Zook. Um, just contractual increases in some of the other line, uh, but legal audit fees, those are, are going up. We've actually been pretty steady or had some savings on the legal side for a while. Not as much anymore. We're pushing up and exceeding that. Um, but also put seventy-five K in there to budget to look at reducing our lunch debt at the end of each year. And that would be targeting our free and reduced students that had carried a balance over or kids that leave the division, no longer with us. So they become inactive, but they're still showing a lunch balance.
Okay. But do we have any, um, I, I hate to call it profit, but extra money? I mean, I know we use it in the nutrition.
So you are not allowed, the federal dollars, uh, you're, we are not allowed to use any nutrition money to pay off student loans.
But it's not the federal money. What about the money like the parents pay? Is that considered federal money?
They, no, yeah, because the federal looks at it, they look at it as correct. So they do not want you to use that. You have to use operating dollars to pay it in.
Yeah.
Maybe we're just gonna have to write it off.
Well, ultimately, so if we have inactive students, we're gonna start.
Our lunch debt includes kids that have been in school for twelve years.
And we're, so that, we did, last year we did write off the ones that were gone, but now, if we got a twelfth grader that has carried it for eleven years, twelve years.
It, it, it looks like we're.
But we're still encouraging them to pay until the point that we're gone.
Well, then we should encourage them after the increase and they hopefully will have some source of income.
Good. Alright, so high, high-level summary here. Um, we, we talked, here's just kind of dollars instead of the FTEs that we showed on the, on the front screens for our, our um, uh, position adds. So eight point six for our adjustments to the base, um, staffing growth, eleven point four million. The other comp and benefits actually net out to a savings because of the VRS savings, the school site adjustments, the department adjustments. Um, get us up to twenty-five point two. And on our budget summary, that would be your um, adjustments to the base plus our um, nondiscretionary amount. So about um, sixteen point uh, five or seven, sixteen point one was our nondiscretionary number. And then the rest was our adjustments to the base. Um, but then when you back out the staffing standard adjustment number, because that's in our non, or that's in our discretionary line at the bottom of. But then when you back out the staffing standard adjustment number, because that's in our non, or that's in our discretionary line at the bottom of our funding summary. Um, you back that out and that gets us to today, what we were talking about with a total of 21.4 million. But the other department requests total up to 11.7 that are under. And, and I will say from the department requests that are included and the other 11.7, there's nothing that we would look at on that request and think was absurd or was not needed and necessary, not of that idea. They were all things that we need to be doing. I mean, the cyclic replacement of computers and desktops, that's 3.5 million of that. So these are things we need to be doing in the division. It's not frivolous spending at all.
So we are under-resourced. Surprise, surprise, but, but the
We should do that earlier.
Yeah.
Would you spend all this time telling me down?
But, but I will say this, every year we we put on this debt, we get a little bit tighter and we can see where we're at with a very clear picture. And I, I gotta tell you, the benefit of going through this exercise is that when we do identify new revenue, we have very surgical places that we can apply it. And a very, very concrete list of priorities and very surgical places that we can apply it and see a gain very quickly.
It's assuming that we get 15 million.
That is assuming that.
So also I, I find that, so this is a great way for us to absorb all this information, but I'm also going to say again on the front end for people who don't necessarily do to see all the upfront numbers without feeling back flavors. That could be like a little bit confusing, like, well, what, what's the school's asking for? You know, I mean, there's all these things. And so I just, I, I hope that we are as articulate in expressing that peelback option and letting people know to your point, just how surgical this is, right? And how down to the dollar this has been, or, or how if then this has been. Because I, I think that's a very important message for everybody to get. Because, you know, we're looking at what we need, you know, we want what we need, what we have to have. It's all just really basically the same thing. But I'm like, you're asking for all these people, but I am, but here's what I'm taking out and how that adds up to this. And sometimes that's not always clear.
So I feel like you guys probably would have said so, but nobody has anything in here that they're just like, no, we, we're not in a place to spend money on that now because it should be going to the, that. Like last year, we had almost like a divide on school type allocation or positions. And we kind of went back and quit. Good news, we didn't get money Friday. So
Easy decision.
Kind of there. Yeah.
We don't see anything on the 3R and I, I really am I'm very hesitant just to, you know, send over a budget that doesn't have anything but 3R.
It's not part of our
So you, yeah, you did, you, we did include it as part of the unfunded list, but, but we do think that there is a legislative solution. And, and candidly, that I think it's one that county government can tolerate and it is one that would permanently and absolutely resolve. It would be the 1% sales tax, which would alleviate our debt service and move that, and those funds could be out.
Probably early July or
If it, I mean, if it passes, it's July.
Yeah, that, that is the case.
But then we have to have a referendum.
Yeah. And that's true. There's a lot of process, but, but I will say that, that there's light at the end of the tunnel with that, which is a very different value proposition than some of our other things. So just, so take a look at that number, 21.4 million. And Chris, if you could go back to the revenue slide for real quick, and I know we're running out of time. We've run out of time. So, so take a look at what we're expecting from state aid. Okay, so our non-discretionary is 21.4 million. We're expecting 23.8 from the state. So if you think about it like this, the state is giving us just enough money to keep doing what we've been doing with no changes. The local funds, that's enough money to finance our salary and compensation adjustment. So no local funds, no salary and compensation.
Well, not if the state included in that budget.
Correct. And that amount would be based on where it is. Just generically, but yes, there's proportional change that would happen. Well, and I will say this, actually in this number, that's not the case because the government proposed this much for compensation. So so it actually wouldn't make that big of a difference. But, but for, for a, for a one-to-one for us to think about it in this way, the state is effectively financing our ongoing operations. And our locality would be financing whether or not our people get a pay bump.
And I'll add, the only reason the state's funding us at that level is because we're adding 700 kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, can you show, not tonight, obviously, but where that 15 million, where would we spend those local funds? Because that may help us in making that case.
It's going south.
It's going sour. I mean, is it, is it broken down here like that at the 15 million? Start our big sales and
At a chair, you have to, uh
I, I still want a second. I got a compliment from this officer.
What did I do?
That is that I did a good job schooling my face.
We're not going to, we're not going to tell.
Oh yeah.
We're not going to tell a whole truth.
Alright, thank you, Susan. Don't get eaten by your coyotes.